I would like to call the City Council meeting for March the 4th, 2014, to order. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Adam here. Long, Gray here. Marsh here. Kenyon here. Teddy here. Tenny here. Schottmeyer here. Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join me in resigning pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice
The first order of business we have tonight is the quarterly financial report for the fourth quarter of 2013. Paul, would you like to give that for us? Paul Beck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very happy to report on our preliminary close for the year 2013. In the general fund, if you remember, we granted salary increases. Of course, you appropriated the money to do salary increases for this year. At that time, we anticipated going to reserves by about $900,000 to $1 million just for those increases. That meant we had forecasted going to reserves by $1 million just for that alone. We actually ended up with a surplus for the year. Now, surpluses are caused by two things. They can be caused by revenue increases or expense reductions, which is the management of the budget. The $870,000 surplus we had in the general fund was about one-third of that was due to revenue increases, especially in sales tax. The other two-thirds was because of expenditure management. And those are two important things we need to understand that go into whether or not we have a surplus or a deficit. Revenue and expenditures and how you manage the expenditures. So I'm very, very happy to report that we have an $870,000 surplus in the general fund. Going on to the other funds, looking at the parking fund. Parking fund generated just about the revenue we had expected. Did have a deficit for some capital expenditures that we had, in fact, expected there, too. Water and sewer fund was pretty flat to what we had intended for the budget at that point in time. We had like a $14,000 surplus in water and sewer. So again, we didn't have the astronomical, well, I shouldn't say astronomical, very large revenue increases that we had in 2012 due to drought conditions, but we did, in fact, just about hit budget. Solid waste. We had a deficit, but it was small, about $164,000. Remember, we did have capital programmed into the solid waste budget. The airport, if you read the report, the airport shows a loss of about $1.5 million. When we really analyze that loss, that's a depreciation loss. In other words, a loss in the value of the assets. Now, again, moving forward, we have to be very, very careful to stay attuned to because we have to keep replenishing the capital assets. Ray at the airport, of course, has been very, very good at getting federal grants to continue to replenish those assets. But all in all, we broke about even because most of the loss was depreciation loss and not a cash loss. Other than that, I'm happy to say that this was a pretty good year for the city of Fayetteville. Most of our things were flat to estimates. We did, we were able to create a surplus in the general fund when we thought we were going to have a loss. And the airport broke even on a cash flow basis. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have for Paul on this? Anything? Okay. Thank you, Paul. Moving along to the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the February 18th, 2014 City Council meeting minutes. Number two, bid number 13-57, CenterPoint Contractors, Incorporated. Resolution to award bid number 13-57 and to authorize the contract, CenterPoint Contractors, Incorporated, for the replacement of six rolling service doors in the amount of $64,500 at the Nolan Wastewater Treatment Plant and the BioSolids Management Site. Number three, Federal Aviation Administration lease agreement. A resolution to approve a 10-year lease agreement for $31,020 per year with the Federal Aviation Administration for a facility at 4370 South School Avenue, for use by its facilities, maintenance team. Number four, hazmat services revenue. A resolution to approve a budget adjustment recognizing hazmat services revenue to the fire department and authorizing an increase in the related expense budget. Number five, bid number 14-14, tenant sales and service. Resolution to award bid number 14-14 to tenant sales and service Minneapolis, Minnesota for the purchase of one tenant S30 sweeper in the amount of $44,291 for use by the recycling and trash collection division. Number six, bid number 14-15, direct sales and service. A resolution to award bid number 14-15 and authorize the purchase of one 2015 Ford F-550 super duty pickup truck with reading body and auto crane from Trix Utilities of North Little Rock in the amount of $77,777 for use by the Nolan Wastewater Treatment Plant. Number seven, Professional Turf Products. A resolution to authorize the purchase of two Toro Groundmaster 400D multi-deck mowers from Professional Turf Products of Lenexa, Kansas, for the Parks Division in the amount of $112,088.66 plus any tax pursuant to the National IPA Contract 12535 and to approve a budget adjustment to move funds to the fleet expense account. Number eight, countryside farm and lawn. A resolution to authorize the purchase of two John Deere mower conditioners from Countrywide Farm and Lawn of Springdale, Arkansas, for the Nolan Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $48,572 plus any applicable tax pursuant to an NJPA cooperative purchasing agreement. Number nine, Scott Equipment. Resolution authorizing the purchase of a Greedall XL4104 excavator truck from Scott Equipment of Springdale, Arkansas, the Transportation Division in the amount of $354,893 pursuant to an NJPA cooperative purchasing agreement. And number 10, Crafton Toll &amp; Associates. Resolution to approve a contract with Crafton Toll &amp; Associates in an amount not to exceed $83,225 for architectural and engineering services associated with the renovation of the Lake Fayetteville Softball Complex. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Adam? Yes. Gray? Yes. Marsh? Yes. Kenyon? Yes. Teddy? Yes. Tenny? Yes. Schottmeyer? Yes.
Okay. Under unfinished business, number one, ADM 13-4331. Amend chapters 151, 162, 163, and 164. An ordinance to amend 164.01 Garage and/or Agricultural and Produce Sales, 161.10 X-Unit 24 Home Occupation, 163.08 Home Occupations, and 164.01 Urban Agriculture, Fowl, Bees, and Goats of Unified Development Code. I will entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
I'll move.
I have a motion in a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Adam? Yes. Gray? Yes. Marsh? Yes. Kenyon? Yes. Teddy? Yes. Tenny? Yes. Schottmeyer? Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section 16410 Garage and/or Agricultural and Produce Sales, Section 16110X Unit 24 Home Occupation, Section 16308 Home Occupations, and Section 16404 Urban Agriculture, Fowl, Bees, and Goats of Unified Development Code.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Before you is the Urban Agriculture Ordinance. It is actually a series of four different ordinance changes to four different chapters of the Unified Development Code in support of community food security and urban agriculture, access to urban agriculture for the citizens of Fayetteville, Arkansas. The only thing new that I have for you this week is a letter that I believe was forwarded to you all that we received from the University of Arkansas's Division of Agriculture Cooperative Extension Service. They provide access and education related to beekeeping across the state of Arkansas, and they provided a letter of support related to the beekeeping provisions that are incorporated in this ordinance. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all might have.
What questions do we have, Peter, on this? Anything? Now, we will take public comment. Everybody gets one. Turn us to the microphone. Please introduce yourself when you come up. And the only way you can come back is if a council member wants to bring you back and ask questions, okay? All right. So who would be first?
Yes, good evening to the mayor and the city council. My name is Teresa Mauer. I think the note said to put my address in there, so 18235 Wildlife Road, Fayetteville, Arkansas. I have served as the chair of the Fayetteville Forward Local Food Action Group since April of 2009, and I just wanted to provide a little bit of perspective. Also, I am serving and speaking today as a volunteer, but for identification purposes, I'm in my third year co-managing the Fayetteville Farmers Market, which I consider the heart of the city. I farm myself, and I've been involved with small farmers for more than 25 years. I will email a copy of these remarks to you after the meeting tonight. So Fayetteville Forward first gathered in April of 2009, and how local food arose out of that as an action group was really from the ground up. At the meeting itself, which was hundreds of Fayetteville citizens coming together, there were several citizens that asked me to make sure that local food, quote, "made it to the table" as we went forward with the Accountability Council and the action groups that were formed. An inspiring statement that the group has used to guide its discussion over these years is as follows. "Fayetteville can be an example to our region of an urban agrarian community and local food destination whose residents, farmers, businesses, and institutions incorporate and benefit from easy access to great locally-produced food." So that statement's evolved over time, but it's one that we've used in our discussions since April of 2009. Since 2009, more than 70 individuals and groups have participated in the Fayetteville Forward Local Food Action Group meetings, discussions, and email lists. So what I want to do for a moment is take a quick snapshot and then come back to what brings us here tonight. As a snapshot view, back in 2004, I was part of a U.S. Department of Ag-funded project called the Northwest Arkansas Local Food Initiative promoting all ZARQ meals. At that time, you could count on one hand the number of local food and farming groups. Today, there are more than 20 organizations and projects active in Fayetteville alone, and it's a source of pride that our community is so active on food, farming, and hunger issues. A concrete example that I wanted to show you tonight, in 2011, the Fayetteville Forward Local Food Action Group put together a little Xerox Local Food Guide. That was in October of 2011. Marilyn over at A&amp;P Commission offered to run it off, and we stuffed and stapled it ourselves. So that was October of 2011, eight pages. In 2012, the edition went to full color, 16 pages, and many more listings of markets, individuals, people invested in local food and farming in our area. The 2013, 2014 full color, 52 pages, and this is the one that we have self-funded and generated sponsors for. And I'm just using that as a snapshot to show you the interest of residents and businesses in this part of our economy. Now, when people pick the guide up, it's available at the market, in the Chamber of Commerce, and so on. What I hear are things from both long-time and new residents. One of the factors for me staying in this area or moving to this area is the local food interest. I love knowing about the local farms. Others say they offer their support at restaurants or other places that they shop, and over and over, they say they have a positive feeling by just knowing there are local producers nearby that are the fabric of our community. So what brings us tonight? The local community food survey was done by the action group in fall of 2012, and results were presented in December 2012, and they helped to identify the priorities that a volunteer task group worked on and formed in 2013 to research what other communities were doing on a few high-priority topics. Based on our discussions and input from these volunteers, these draft policies that are before you were developed. So in summary, I want to just say that I support the ordinance, and this evening, following me, you'll hear the voices of local residents who have participated in these grassroots local food efforts, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teresa. We'd like to address this next.
Hi, everyone. My name's Adrianne Schoenfield. I'm a resident of Ward 3. I'm also the director of Feed Fayetteville. I believe that the council members are all familiar with Feed Fayetteville, but just to give a brief background, we were formed in response to Arkansas being number one in the nation for hunger and Washington County having some of the highest numbers of hungry children right here in our own backyard. We work to create food security in our community through programs, partnerships, and policies that increase availability to local foods and therefore increase community nutrition by supporting a sustainable local food system. The proposed Urban Act policy changes are a result of the administration of the Community Food Survey to learn more about citizens' barriers to access to healthy foods. We polled citizens at large on ways that they procure food, and then compiled the results for the mayor. He commissioned the creation of the Urban Act Policy Group, which Teresa mentioned, was a volunteer task force that spent several months studying other policy successes in other cities. With the help of city staff, we've delved deeply into the exemplary food policies from around the country. The goal of Feed Fayetteville is to uplift what already works, and there's no need to reinvent the wheel. There's already some really solid examples of successful Urban Act policies throughout the country, from Seattle to New York City, high-density urban areas that allow beekeeping, that allow chickens, with high success rates. The outcome of our research and deliberation are the proposed ordinance revisions. And basically, these ordinance changes include increasing the sales of locally grown food around town to where onsite sales where food is grown are available, allowing animals at educational facilities that will increase community education opportunities, and the expansion of the chicken ordinance and other small animal allowances on a very small scale. The passage of the revised ordinance changes will lead to increased community food security, economic benefits, educational opportunities, and improved health outcomes for our neighbors and for ourselves. We ask the council to fully consider passing the proposed ordinance changes to help us improve access to healthy foods. There exist within the Fayetteville City limits USDA-defined food deserts, and a food desert is a census tract with a substantial share of residents who live in low-income areas that have low levels of access to a grocery store or healthy affordable food retail outlet. By increasing opportunities for onsite produce sales around town, we will be creating access points for low-income residents who might not otherwise have transportation to healthy affordable food options. The public transportation in our city doesn't operate on the weekends, leaving those who are food insecure with few options to procure healthy foods. And we hear this from the people we work with at Feed Fayetteville, that they can't make it to the farmer's market on the weekends because they have no bus routes to get there. So providing access in their own neighborhood will help them be able to buy foods. And not everyone can simply become a farmer, and let alone an urban farmer. It takes a strong desire, a lot of hard work, and extensive knowledge. Just the passing of this proposed ordinance, not everyone's going to run out and get bees and goats and chickens. Those who really desire to try and learn need to have access to education opportunities. And by allowing the small animals at educational facilities, we will be able to enhance their education so that if they do choose to raise chickens in their backyard, they will know how to do so properly and safely and raise healthy animals. Finally, the expanded animal allowances on a small scale will have the effect of increasing the availability of protein sources such as goat's milk and eggs. Protein is one of the most important sources of fuel the human body requires to function, and oftentimes allergies or low income can lead to limited availability to protein in many of our residents. For some people, the idea of urban agriculture may be new, odd. We're surrounded by countryside, so why don't we just let people outside the city grow the food that we need? But urban agriculture has a long history, a vibrant present, and some would argue, a vital future. Benefits of urban agriculture include the educational value of growing food for adults, but most importantly, for children. The educational, I'm sorry, appreciation of how our food is produced, and as part of encouraging a healthy diet, improvements in physical and mental health as a result of regular outdoor activity, contact with nature, and the sense of achievement. The empowerment of disadvantaged communities with useful skills, and the importance of preserving green space in urban areas for both its social and environmental benefits. With increased transportation costs, now more than ever, is important for us to grow more food closer to where the people live that is tasty, wholesome, and nutritious, and that enhances rather than destroys the environment, and that satisfies people's need for a secure and trusted food supply. Food is the unifying fabric of our community. It is the basic common denominator, and it affects our community resilience. Urban agriculture continues to have a number of benefits, and first and most obvious is the production of food for consumption by the urban population. However, the social value of bringing a community together, the education on training how food is produced, and the provision of space for recreation all remain important. Thank you to the mayor and the council for your full attention to this matter.
First of all, thank you for what you do, and I'm struggling with something, and it's not really a question, it's more asking your opinion. I think if we do something like this, we must do it in the sense that we are helping those who, I think, really need to be helped, which is the children, low-income, people that I believe are really affected and impacted by food insecurity. But one thing I'm struggling with is, in order to become an urban farmer, you have to either own your property or have, if you're a rental property, you have to have permission. So what, how does this, in your mind, benefit those who don't have the ability to own a property or that can't get permission to do it? What do you think the greatest benefit to this is for those people?
I think that Fayetteville is such a mixed use, I mean, every neighborhood, there's high-income and low-income housing in most of the neighborhoods around, especially the downtown area. So perhaps their neighbor owns their own land and can grow it. So if it's accessible within a walking distance, the onsite sales of the produce, it's like a garage sale, so if you can walk down the street on a Saturday and buy some eggs or some squash or tomatoes or whatever from a resident, that will help. The other, speaking on behalf of Feed Fayetteville, I would say that this proposed ordinance changes will allow us to have chickens at the food hub, so that will allow us to provide opportunities for snap gardeners to have access.
Okay. So improved accessibility, you would say, would be one of the major points?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other further?
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you. I want to thank the council and Mayor Jordan for listening to me tonight. I'm very happy to be talking to you about this new Urban Ag ordinance that we have as a great possibility. I have a professional background in public health nutrition, which I pursued because of my convictions around hunger and the importance of good nutrition to health. I'm currently working on an Environmental Dynamics degree focused on community resilience at the University of Arkansas. And I do contend that when we have a diverse local economy, especially a local food economy, that that does help us be more resilient to especially economic shocks like national and regional shocks in the economy. And I'm very, very blessed to be a part of the Tricycle Farms neighborhood. Being a part of Tricycle Farms and that initiative and community has greatly enhanced the quality of my life, and I've heard many others attest to the same. But what I really wanted to tell you is that I love Fayetteville. I moved here in 2008, and I have really loved this community ever since. I've lived in a variety of different places around the country, and I've never known a community as socially cohesive and supportive and as focused on and motivated to be a better place for people to live as Fayetteville. So I fully believe that passing this Urban Ag ordinance will make us an even better community. I really do. I think that it will help us become even more cohesive and supportive people and more resilient. And I've already seen this happening, where I volunteer at Tricycle Farms. There's a lot of initiatives, as has already been spoken to around town, and I just happen to focus my attention on Tricycle because that's the neighborhood that I live in, and it's an amazing venture. At Tricycle Farms, we want people to feel empowered to grow their own food. We encourage people to take steps towards having a healthier life for themselves and their families by learning about whole foods, how to grow whole foods, learning cultivation, and also just gaining a deeper connection to the community, to others, and to the land and the natural world. So local food initiatives don't only help our economy and promote food security and healthier lifestyles, but growing our own food and helping each other do that, working on that together, gives us more meaning in our lives by building more cohesion in the community. So when we know our neighbors, we're more resilient, and we can bounce back from all kinds of shocks, whether it's extreme weather or economic shocks, whatever it is. You know, when we know each other and we can work together and we know what each other's strengths are, it helps us be a more resilient community. So, I mean, we've all heard about food miles, but let's just think about this for a second. The average salad travels 1,400 miles before we eat it. So how much of the cost of that salad stays in our local economy? How nutritious is the salad after it's gone on such a journey? Because nutrition is affected by that journey. And what happens if California continues to have drought problems? What happens if the trucks can't come to town? You know, how long are we food secure in those kinds of situations? So this is a start. This is a step. You know, we're already moving in the right direction in this community, and, you know, we can do that much better by passing this ordinance. If we support this ordinance, which I feel like is very well-vetted, again, I was fortunate to be on the committee that Adrianne was talking about earlier, our community will be encouraged, more people, more people in our community, people that, maybe they're not involved in the local food economy yet, but once the ordinance is passed, you know, there's going to be more infrastructure and more encouragement for more people to get involved, and it'll help this movement grow, and empower them to gain more control over their diet, to gain more control over their pocketbooks, and keep more money circulating in our local economy, too. And I think that cities and towns that garden together and farm together stay together. You know, it's like Teresa was saying earlier, these are places that people want to live and stay. I mean, I know that's how it's affected me and lots of other people that I've talked with. Now, I couldn't commit to being here on the 18th because I could possibly be in labor, but I'm very happy to talk to you tonight, and I'm fortunate to be having Samuel in Fayetteville. And I'm just as close to an urban farm as I can get, which is Tricycle Farms. Can I share a quote with you? Okay. This is Wendell Berry. "Better than any argument is to rise at dawn and pick dew-wet red berries in a cup." I also want to invite you to our feed swap at Tricycle Farms this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Is there any questions? I'll answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
My name is Jeff Huber. I'm an architect and an urbanist. I reside in Ward Four, and I'm working with the local food group. I also work with the University of Arkansas Community Design Center. I want to just share a few thoughts with you tonight and why I feel urban agriculture and what I would actually call agricultural urbanism is a critical issue that the city needs to address. Food policy and production have been absent from American city planning for 60 years, despite the dedication of the cities to public health, safety, and welfare. It would be like me, an architect, curiously leaving out a kitchen on a house plan. So some may ask, and this is one of the things I want to address, is why locate food in the city or why locate food production within the city? To them, I would say, local governments have always provided public services through potable water, police and fire protection, sewer treatment, water man, or waste management, transportation infrastructure, why not food utilities? And this actually may address Alderman Tennant's comments about what is the actual purpose here? I think the city could actually hand over a lot of public land, especially in street right-of-ways, to actually become more food productive places that we can begin to invest in landscapes that offer people the opportunity to glean as well as grow food in the city. You know, this is important because there's about, you know, while, let me just step back, while pragmatic reasoning usually favors location of agriculture outside the city, there are compelling economic, environmental, and social reasons to integrate agriculture within the city. First, it's the convenience provided by the proximity of growing systems to demystify farming and positions it as a tool for local economic development and job creation. This is not just a means of food insecurity or to helping out impoverished people, but it's a level playing field for everybody, every citizen in the city, to actually become more familiar with food production. Second, urban land costs promote development of high-quality intensive farming economies with higher yields per acre, both in volume and nutritional content. That makes farming feasible at a small scale once again. Just to give you an interesting statistic, through spin farming, small-plot intensive farming techniques, we have seen that a one acre of land in an urban area can actually achieve about $80,000 per year, where that same one acre of land in a rural setting only achieves about $8,000 per acre. So you can see incredible investment. And two, we can talk about the diversity and the biodiversity that comes from the products that are delivered to that. And just to mention on beekeeping, you know, I think that's a critical, especially when you see colony collapse as a huge issue across the country today. Urban beekeeping actually has been shown through evidence to actually preserve bee populations and, in fact, a good response to urban bee collapse, or, I'm sorry, colony collapse. So on third, well-designed agricultural systems can be used to advance delivery of community-wide ecosystem services, including conservation of urban ecosystems like riparian corridors, legacy prairies, and urban tree canopies, all very important to the city of Fayetteville. Fourth, productive landscapes contribute to cities' open space requirements, enhancing livability, access to outdoor activities otherwise unavailable. And one last note, it is a known fact that grocers only keep enough food stocked on their shelves for three days, meaning we are only nine meals from anarchy at any given time. So in order for the city to become more resilient, I think an urban ag ordinance and actually the development of an agricultural urbanism is critical to the city. So I just want to leave on, I commend the city of Fayetteville and everyone involved in this effort, and once again, being at the forefront of issues regarding resiliency and sustainability, and I look forward to the furthering of this urban agricultural code over time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Who else?
Evening, council, Mr. Mayor. My name's Ralph Ellis. My wife Judy Neal and I are residents of Ward One up on Sequoia Drive, and I just wanted to quickly add two points because I haven't heard them being made in this discourse yet. We have touched on that bees in particular need help. There's a wide consensus that they're in trouble, and my wife Judy and I have taken the three courses up at the Beekeepers Association, and we have our face made up to participate in this in our single-family residence. And the reason we want to do that is for the good of posterity, for the good of the generation that comes after us and after that. And the other point that I haven't heard made here much is that people who undertake beekeeping are going to be people who have a commitment that's inherent in that practice. You know, you can go out and get a dog on an impulse because it's Christmas, even when you have no plan and you have no commitment, the dog's going to live 20 years, but you might be sick of the dog in a week. And so there's a flood of dogs that are homeless because people have decided to get rid of them. But beekeepers have to be committed to learning a lot, to a considerable expense, and to a lot of work. And so you're unlikely to have people jumping into this impulsively and taking this on. And on the other side of this, you know, when people want to, when people decide that they don't want to keep their dog anymore all of a sudden, those dogs have no place where they can go, but a hive of bees that somebody decides they want to get out of is a desirable resource. I'm sure the people in the NWAB Beekeep Association would concur that they'd love to come and give a good home to a resource that is in a shortage. And so I don't hear people saying that, I don't think it'll be an impulsive or ill-considered thing when people do this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having me this evening. Thanks for letting me come in my snow outfit, because I've been trudging through snow all day, which has been really fun. My name is Bernice Hembry, and I'm a resident here in Fayetteville, and I'm in Ward Four. And I'm coming to talk to you a little bit about apple seeds, and a few of you may be aware of what we do. I'm the board chair for Apple Seeds. And we go into our area schools and we help them start and maintain school gardens. And we do that in about four schools inside Fayetteville. And we have grown so much over the past few years that we have so many schools coming to us that we don't have the capacity to actually go into every single school. So we are starting, and we're so excited, we are starting an urban teaching farm. Next month, we break ground on this teaching farm, and it will be just north of, it's our natural foods. So it's in town, which is exciting. We're going to have a little urban farm. And what we do, we are so glad that we live in Fayetteville because we are allowed to do all the great things that we do, but this bill, when it passes, will give us the opportunity in the future, if we wanted to raise bees, and show kids what it's like to raise bees, we will have that opportunity, which I think is very important. So Apple Seeds inspires healthy living through garden-based education. And we develop and implement programs that educate and excite children about fruits and vegetables. And I'm just going to go back and repeat the word "excite," because if you have never been in an environment where you get to work with kindergarten through fifth grade and see them outside in a garden, it's amazing! And they learn so much that will take them through life. And that's no joke. I mean, you guys should go once a week and like volunteer at your local school garden and see how important it is for these kids and what they're learning. I had one kid, when we were picking tomatoes, and we were making pizzas that day, we were making homemade pizzas and showing them how to do it, healthy snacks for after-school. He told me he thought that pizzas came off the plant and they put them in boxes, and they got them in the freezer section. At the grocery store, it's crazy! So what they learn, you don't realize, because we're adults and we think everyone just knows that food comes from plants, kids don't know that. And they don't know that eggs come from chickens and that chickens live on a farm. I mean, these are things that we as adults know, but children do not. And it's so important that we have the opportunities to teach these children these so vital, important things early on in their life, because early education on produce and farming leads to healthy citizens. I'm just going to repeat that again. Early education on produce and farming leads to healthier citizens. And the citizens of a great town of Fayetteville, we should all want that. We want knowledgeable, healthy citizens in the town that we live in. Urban agriculture provides this. It gives many children their only opportunity to a local food source, and the only opportunity to see and touch and really honestly know their food and know where it comes from. If we do not teach our children where food comes from, in 20 years, I think that soon, we will be in so much trouble because we are going to lose our local farmers, and we're going to lose our future scientists and biologists because they just don't know early on what is so important in life, which is food. It's what feeds us all, it's our nutrients every day. So I gave you all my examples. Oh, one other point, which I found this incredible, the average age of a farmer is 58. I mean, that's getting up there, right? You can't bend over in like Hoare Row as well as you used to when you were 20. So by implementing more urban agriculture, you're teaching people how to farm, and that's important because we don't want all of our farmers to get old and die. We want new generation of farmers. We want them to know how to keep bees, and we want them to know how to plant potatoes, and we want them to know how to grow our food. So that's why I'm here today to tell you, please, think about how important these things are. Am I having a question?
Well, I certainly hope there's some hope for me.
I hope there is, too.
Good.
Okay, that's all, thank you, guys. Oh, you know what, I should also point out, my parents, they have a farm, they raise bees, and they have about 75 goats, and it's expensive. They live in a small town in Alabama, and no one's going to go out and like get goats and bees just because they think it's cool, because it costs like, you know, thousands of dollars, and it's hard work. But they do produce goat cheese, and they produce honey, and they sell it at their local farmer's markets, and that's why we do these things. And so you give better food sources for people who need it because they can't always drive to their, what some parents, just to add, some parents that come and pick up their kids, I'm in Leverett School District, and we do have a large population of low-income students and parents there, and I've had so many parents tell me they're excited to learn how to grow kale, and the reason is because they don't want to go to their frou-frou grocery store and spend a lot of money on buying kale. And so for them, it's important because they can actually grow kale, and it saves them lots of money. So something else. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else?
Good evening, mayor and council. Good to see you all. My name is Eric Goodspeed, and I live in Ward Four. I'm currently a family medicine resident and also a simple citizen here, and I wanted to simply stand here to offer support on this excellent opportunity for our city. I think primarily what comes to mind is the concept of responsibility, self-responsibility, community responsibility. What empowers people and a society more than learning, and learning something that's so fundamental to our existence? Food is energy, and we can create energy right at our own home. So I think that it's an excellent idea, and I think we should do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Who else? Anyone?
My name is Nicole Savida. I'm a visiting assistant professor of law at the University of Arkansas. I'm a graduate of the LLM program in agricultural and food law, and I now teach in the program. And my scholarly focus and the course I teach is food justice and urban agriculture. So my work sits at the heart of what we're trying to do here with the urban agriculture ordinance, and I wanted to address a couple of issues about the real food security benefits of urban agriculture and of the ordinance that's been proposed. I think it is really easy to think about food insecurity as something other people deal with, and the reality is that one in six Americans is food insecure at this time, and that we are all probably a couple of missed paychecks, a couple of misfortunes away from not being able to fill our grocery, to fill our grocery baskets or our refrigerators. Urban agriculture in and of itself may not provide all the calories that a struggling family needs, but a policy like this does something very important. It sets the stage, it creates an opportunity, and makes a framework for people of all socioeconomic statuses to engage with food in a different level, to build the skills they need to be resilient when they encounter a situation like that, to actually produce some, if not all, of their food, and to produce excess that they can actually market and sell within their own communities, creating microeconomic opportunities to supplement one's income, to help people tide over during times of scarcity, and to build a sense of value. When the recession hit us a couple of years ago, I did not live in Fayetteville at the time, my husband lost his job and was out of work for a very long time. It was very difficult at the time for us to figure out how we were going to fill that refrigerator every week. And fortunately, I had a stable job and I had a steady income, but we had a lot of unexpected expenses. And that's part of what prompted us to start thinking about getting more involved in food and agriculture, in sustainable food systems, in figuring out how we could play a role in producing our own food and supporting ourselves. And that journey is what actually brought us to Fayetteville, what prompted me to refocus my legal career and my area of study on food and agriculture and on food justice specifically. To speak a little bit more directly, however, about the ordinance itself and the opportunities that it creates for people here in Fayetteville, Alderman Tennant brought up a good point about how are we, through this ordinance, actually and actively creating opportunities for the most vulnerable among us to support themselves and enhance their food security through their own cultivation? And I think the answer to that comes in a couple ways. First of all, although it is very possible, and in fact, realistically speaking, probable, that many landlords will continue to restrict their tenants from keeping bees, keeping chickens, selling produce, that's not an inevitability. And I think that over time, as citizens and potential renters view the ability to take part in what the city has made available to them as a benefit, that'll be something just like other benefits that landlords provide that can be negotiated in a lease. Also, urban agriculture, as Jeff Huber mentioned, can take place outside of one's own property, and I think, once we set the stage for this and created the community environment where urban agriculture becomes one of our community's core values, we can start thinking about ways to get people access to land and access to spaces to grow. The idea, as Joanna Pollak mentioned, of the community cohesion that happens around urban agriculture. If I am a low-income renter, struggling with food insecurity, but my neighbors are raising chickens, and I say, you know, I'd love to help you out, maybe when you go away, maybe come feed the chickens every couple of days. I now have worked with my neighbor, and I might be able to use some of their eggs as a source of protein for my family and a source of nourishment for my family. Maybe my neighbor on the other side has an extra patch of land that they wouldn't mind letting me garden it. These things seem a little bit maybe too happy, too Mayberry, too utopian, but in the research that I've done, and it's extensive, I've just built a curriculum for a whole course on urban agriculture, this stuff is happening, it's happening all across our country, and it's transforming the way neighbors are relating to neighbors. And I think it's really important that Fayetteville moves forward and move in this direction rather than remain where it is, because this is becoming a real key part of what draws vibrant community and engaged types of people into a community. Speaking just for a moment about the urban bees, which I know has been an area of some concern for people, I will admit to having been a little bit cautious about the whole concept myself until I did more research and educated myself both on beekeeping and on urban beekeeping policies across the country. And having just inventoried that, I can tell you that there are so many cities, far larger than Fayetteville, far more densely populated, with extremely diverse populations, that have authorized urban beekeeping, have done so for far longer than a decade, maybe two, and are having excellent results with minimal, minimal complaints. In fact, in connection with the campaign to authorize and legalize urban beekeeping in Los Angeles that's going on right now, those activists have made available a lot of materials about urban beekeeping and about the successes across the In fact, in connection with the campaign to authorize and legalize urban beekeeping in Los Angeles that's going on right now, those activists have made available a lot of materials about urban beekeeping and about the successes across the country. Looking through their materials, I was able to find evidence that the city of Seattle, which has authorized urban beekeeping since, going off the top of my head here, I think somewhere around 2002, has reported one incident, one complaint, since that time. And that complaint was because an urban beekeeper had one of his bee boxes located too close to the fence line. All the city had to do was call up and ask him to move it. He moved it to an appropriate place. End of story. I think if a city as densely and diversely populated as Seattle can manage this, we certainly have the ability to do so here. And I'll close just by mentioning what I think is really important in terms of the government's role in supporting urban agriculture, in supporting food security. We need to create the conditions where people can empower themselves and involve themselves in these activities. By doing so, by saying, "This is something we encourage you to do if you're interested, if you want to take the time and make the investment of your energy, your resources, et cetera," we're setting the stage, and we're allowing communities of practice to develop. We're allowing community energy and engagement to cohere around the idea of backyard chickens. And frankly, people in our community are already really engaged with this and are starting to trade that information and to work together. And so, the community itself that builds around the opportunity we create through this ordinance will serve as an enormous resource for people who are food insecure, who are less food literate, and who need the help coming forward and taking advantage of the opportunities. And with that, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions?
Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I would just like to publicly say thank you to Nicole. I invited her to the Ward 4 meeting on February 24th. So, if anyone from the public would like to review about 30 minutes of, I think, of Nicole talking and answering questions and giving us some really good facts from her legal background as well as her own experience. I thought it was very valuable, and I think the Ward 4 folks who were there appreciated. I just want to publicly say thank you very much for giving up your Monday night on February 24th and joining us. It was very helpful, very good.
You're very welcome, and it has really been a privilege to be a part of this process and to work with everyone in inventorying what's gone on across the country and figuring out how we can fit in in a way that allows all urban residents to make use of their property in ways that please them and that provide multiple benefits.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us on this? Okay.
Hi. Hi there, Council and Mayor. My name is Amber Alexander, and I'm a resident of Ward 4. I just wanted to stand up and say I'm the face of the person who wants goats. We have 3 and 1/2 acres, and I just want to thank you for considering expanding the ordinance so that we could have more than 4 chickens. 4 chickens gives us enough eggs for our family, except in the winter. But if we could actually have 20 chickens on our 3 and 1/2 acres that we have in the city, we could share. Rhonda's a neighbor. And so, that's something that we're really excited about. My daughter's here. She won't come up with me, but she wanted, I was trying to get her to go up, come up and say what she wanted to say, which is, "We want to have goats." So, I don't know how excited you'd be about that, Rhonda, but it is something that we're taking into consideration. We're looking at building fences right now and what that would entail and all of that. One reason for goats is just for, instead of having a dog, I mean, we don't have a dog, but goats are awfully fun to watch, but it's the honeysuckle in the city. And I really look forward to watching little lawn mowers out there, helping me with these invasive weeds that have certainly taken over our part of town. I'm not worried about milk. I'm not worried about all of that. But just the option of having someone who can help me out with my Boeing. So, anyway, just wanted to put a face to, you know, someone who wants goats and more chickens and bees and lives in the city as a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber, I'll be fine with you. Have a good one.
Is there anyone else? All right. Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. Okay. We are, what's the wishes of the council? Yes, Mark?
We've heard a lot about urban agriculture as far as produce and bees, but we haven't heard a lot about goats. And I hope that, we will discuss this again in two weeks before we vote on it. And I wish that, I hope that someone will bring forward some valuable informations regarding that issue. Coming from a rural area and being raised, goats are crafty little pests sometimes. But I think that they're also an opportunity for a lot of people. But we do need to have some good education. I've received a lot of good education in this discussion, and I was raised on a farm. I have a degree in food science from the Bumpers College of Agriculture, but I never studied urban agriculture. You know, this is new for me. And I think that there's an important opportunity for those individuals that support the expansion of our urban agriculture to continue with education so there's not so much misunderstanding in the community. We did talk last time that there are a lot of neighborhoods that have covenants that are going to prevent goats, most specifically. And when we put up the map, really, the areas that are going to allow urban agriculture may be those areas where the individuals will embrace it to a degree. But it's Wilson Park, Washington Willow, and the downtown areas because they were developed, and it's in our ward, Matthew. I don't know if you've heard much input. I really haven't, except for some people over in Woodland. But I think that they're under covenant. But what I'm asking is for, if anyone could offer some educational opportunity as far as the goat management, because goats are crafty. I know this from experience of being raised on a farm where goats were crafty. And I'm looking at the opportunity. I'm not looking at, in any way, to try to stir up an issue that cannot be resolved, but we do need the information. So, that's what I'm asking. I do support this. I don't think it is so much that we're going to have individuals that are transient, that will be suddenly farming our public lands. But what I know from my own neighborhood is those individuals that garden and share produce with me are good neighbors. And they would, the more produce that we produce, because there are times of the year where it's in excess, then there will be more availability to share this produce with individuals that may be food insecure. And that's the type of community that I think we live in. It's the type of community that I know, living in my neighborhood, which is Wilson Park. And it's not about an economic advantage necessarily as much as it is about building community and offering the opportunity for individuals to share and to grow their neighborhoods in a way that could be a community that has compassion, as we're recognized. The, as we move forward, the, there are opportunities. And that's what I want us to focus on in our evaluation of changing the ordinance that we currently have. Anyone can garden currently. What do the changes mean specifically? And currently, we've heard that they offer the opportunity for an individual to sell the produce. And I see this, I love, there's a guy that sells a little produce over on Salem. I don't know if it's legal or not, but thank goodness he does. I love his Oprah over on Salem Road over there. And I know that he really can use a little pocket change. He's much more inexpensive than the farmer's market, and he does have beautiful produce. I'm just saying. So, the more that we, because the farmer's market does have beautiful produce, but it is not inexpensive when you're looking at feeding a family. The value's there. I see the value. But as a community, if we get together, I always think about the victory gardens during World War II that we read about and that we know. These were communities that, families generally, that got together, and families like mine that were subsistence farmers in the rural part of Washington County that all summer long, the family was gardening and canning and freezing. And that's what we utilized in my family for our, a very large part of our family and our extended family. So, this is what I see as the opportunity we have and to bring it into our community. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, Mayor?
You may be interested in, I heard from a Ward 2 person this morning from Wilson Park. I've only heard from one from Wilson Park, but she was ecstatic that we were even considering.
Well, I've heard some good things too.
You know, I love these kind of debates where we get to talk about long-term stuff or high-level concepts because that's really what gets me going. But I thought I might try and just relate to you some personal experiences of mine.
Make it a little more relatable.
That's what I was going to talk about. You know, whenever I was first elected, I lived in a subdivided rent house just a block off of Dixon. It had been known for years as a problem house. The top and the bottom floors were different apartments, and there was a third apartment and a renovated shed in the backyard, and it had always been rented out to groups of students, whoever could find enough friends to pull together the rent. Well, when I moved in, my first order of business was to tear up the yard and put in a garden and to get chickens. And I can't tell you how wonderful of an experience it was. I mean, it really was life-changing for me. It was the first garden I'd ever been in since I was about 3 or 4 years old, which was the last time my parents had had a garden. So, I didn't really remember any of that. And my favorite day to garden was in the shoulder season in the fall, was game days. Because there were so many people downtown and so many people walking through the neighborhoods just looking at the houses and the yards. I can't tell you how many people would stop to talk to me. And they had the friendliest things to say, whether they were in town or from out of town. They just were ecstatic about how beautiful it was. And that was right next to the street, and that they were given the opportunity to enjoy it. And you know, even though you could stand in the sidewalk and pick my tomatoes, I never had any issue with people stealing the food. And by all means, I would have given it away for free. That's part of the reason I was doing this. But I never had that issue. I lived next door to one of the Tyson heirs, and whenever I got chickens, that was the first day she ever talked to me, and I found out she was pretty darn friendly too. I loved it. You know, it really did make a difference in not just my life, but not my roommate's lives, but a lot of people's lives. Probably the most interesting experience, or maybe the most relatable one, is whenever I was dating Cassie, now my wife. We had decided we would spend the Saturday together, all Saturday. And I invited her over to have oatmeal with me, hand-ground oatmeal. That was my thing. That was how I impressed her. And the way I really put the cherry on top, so to speak, was I picked my own mulberries from my own yard and put it in the oatmeal. And, you know, I didn't grow up knowing what a mulberry tree was. My parents didn't teach me that. It was something I learned later because I had a garden, because somebody had stopped to talk to me on the street and pointed out that I had a mulberry tree in my yard. And, you know, that they were married. So, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, I feel like our role as city leaders is to turn our community into, really, it's a setting for these kinds of experiences. It's a setting for all these experiences that we share, whether that's a great night out on Dixon or enjoying a game in the stadium, or any number of other things, or learning more about food. I think that's our role as a city. That's what a city's function is, is to provide a setting for these experiences. And I think we have to ask ourselves when we consider this, what kind of experiences are we precluding if we don't pass this? My family is from Utah, and when Utah was settled by the Mormons, it was a big desert, and they had to figure out how to grow their food. So, every city, every city, every neighborhood in every city was designed to be irrigated and to have backyard farms in the alleyways between the houses, the mid-block alleys. And I can remember we'd go out there about every 2 years to see my grandparents, being able to pick my own raspberries for my oatmeal. I remember that very vividly. And I don't think most kids today have that experience. I think our cities preclude them from having those memories. And I'm very thankful I have that kind of memory. I cherish it. And I would like to be able to say to the kids that live here today, "You can have those kinds of memories too." So, for me, that's what this is about. What kind of, what kind of setting can we place for these kinds of experiences? And what are we willing to preclude?
Okay. Anybody else? Now, I take it the council wants to leave this on the, what's the wishes of the council?
Ready to vote. But you don't want to hold it?
I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready.
I'm ready to vote, but I thought we had been asked originally to hold it for 3 readings.
Well, I'm just asking you what you would like to do.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
All right. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Adams?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Kinnon?
No.
Shopmar?
No.
Mayor, it requires 6 affirmative votes to suspend the rules, and you can vote if you wish to pass the motion.
I'm going to vote yes.
In ordinance to amend Section 164.10 Garage and/or Agricultural and Produce Sales, Section 161.10 X Unit 24 Home Occupation, Section 163.08 Home Occupations, and Section 164.04 Urban Agriculture, Fowl, Bees, and Goats of the Unified Development Code.
What final comments do we have from the council on this?
I do have a final comment.
Certainly.
Just checking my email, I have suddenly received information on goats. Seems like that these goats are pretty well behaved. (laughter) Just thought I would share that. So, that's the kind of community we have here in Fayetteville.
That's for sure.
Any final comments from council on this? Let me tell you the reason that I got involved in this. I was raised on a farm, and we didn't have any running water. I was raised in a 4-room house, 2 doors, front and back. And that garden helped sustain us. Now, we know, and in the studies that I have seen, approximately 18,000 children die worldwide a day from starvation. And that's why I wanted to see something like this in our city. I, maybe this is not a perfect ordinance, but we do know that 37% of families in Washington County have some sort of food insecurity. We know that they're number 1, number 2 in the state, I believe. Is that correct? And in my state of the city, I said we would work to address that. Is this a perfect document? No. Is this a perfect ordinance? No. But I believe it's a start. And if we need to make adjustments, we will. But we need to address food insecurity. And I want to thank Peter Neheringardt because he has worked tirelessly on this ordinance. And he went to all the wards, and I want to thank Matthew Petty because we said in those meetings with the Feed Festival and different food groups, and we said that we would bring something to the council, and we have done that. Now, it's up to the council to decide what they want to do. But I have supported this and will support it now.
Mayor? Mayor, I just want to clarify that I'm not against the ordinance. I was against voting for it when Alderman Long's not here, as well as the fact that we have another amendment that he wrote that specifically addresses some of the issues in the ordinance with itself. So, I just felt it wasn't prudent to do in our own return.
And I'm not questioning your decision. I mean, I want you all to know that. So, is there any... Yes, Justin?
Yeah, and, and I'd like to say that I, I think there's still quite a few questions in my mind, not from the general idea of this, but really what, what this really means to make a change like this that could impact potentially many, many landowners in this city, which, if this passes tonight, and I think that it will with or without my vote, I'm not gonna lose any sleep over it. It's not gonna really upset me, because I don't think this will affect very many people in this city at all. I think that it will, there will be a handful of people do this, and that's fine. And I do believe that there, there might be some educational opportunities come up. Those that are fortunate enough to own homes or get permission from their, from their landowners to do this, that's fine. And, and again, I, I'm not, I'm not against it as a whole. One of my concerns was, was about goats, because I went down to the Farmer's Co-op. I talked to several people, one being my dad, who was born during the Great Depression, and, and he said, "Does anybody have any idea," and we still have a farm, and he said, "Does anybody have any idea how much it costs to raise a goat, or chickens, or build a coop? It can be hundreds of dollars." I found a website that said four to five hundred dollars possibly to build, to build some things on your property, and unfortunately, feed is becoming astronomically high, and that's causing our food to cost so much. And, and my fear is, we're going to pass this, and, and, and there's a lot of this that I think is a hobby ordinance. I think it will enhance the hobbies of some people who, again, own their property or have their property, and, and, and that's okay. But I have a problem making policy changes for that reason. My main concern here was this has to affect those who are food insecure. Mainly, my concern would be low-income children of this city. And maybe it will, slightly. There might be a few people that actually grow their own food, and there might be a few people that actually sell their own food. Maybe they'll give it away. I hope so. But to those low-income children, I don't know that they'll have the money to buy from someone at the store or buy from someone on the street corner. I was thrilled to hear that the Food Bank is going to have chickens. I think that's outstanding. I, when I first heard this, Peter, and I talked, and I said this in the Word Three meeting, that my wish would be that each ward take city-owned land and, and turn one piece of land in each ward into a community garden, where people could sign up for spots in that garden, and if they wanted to grow things and, and have animals, that was their place to do it. And, and that could become a community center for sharing and, and trading and, and doing all of those things, instead of bringing it to the individual homes. And, and again, maybe this will affect a lot of people. I hope it does, because even though I'll vote against it, I'm voting against it not because it's a bad idea, but because there's some details of it that just concern me, and I've got too many questions around making what I think is a hobby ordinance the law of the land that might affect people, because I've had several people in East Fayetteville, and I think East Fayetteville is, is, is a great part of our city. We have a, a tremendous group of people who give not just in dollars, but in time and volunteer. We have great education. There is a, a wonderful garden now at Vandergriff Elementary where my kids love, and, and believe me, I, I, I think that's all great. But there's been a lot of people concerned about property values, and they've said, "Look, what if, what if I wanna sell my home, and somebody's, somebody's got bees and goats and chickens next door to my house, because I don't live in a covenant-protected neighborhood? And what happens to me if I can't sell my property?" And my answer is, "Well, try to sell it to somebody that thinks that's a good idea." That narrows down the pool for that person to do that. And, and not that that's gonna happen very often. Again, I don't think any of this is gonna happen very often. I don't think a lot of good or bad's gonna come from this, but it still doesn't make it okay for me to vote for it on that level. And so, I want people to know that, because I have to, I have to get these questions answered in my head, and maybe two weeks would've done it, maybe it wouldn't. I, I really don't know. But I hope that the people that are behind this and the, and the passion that we've seen continues, and that these sort of things truly do happen in our city. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. From the research I looked at, that, that Peter and I have talked about and several others, not, some cities participate in this, some that have passed it don't have a lot of participation. I don't know what'll happen here. We are a different community. We prove that every second Tuesday. So, I just want people to know that. I'm not against this idea, but I do believe covenants are there for a reason in some neighborhoods. It is about property values. We can debate all day long if covenants were put in there to keep people out. Maybe so. But I know in my neighborhood, we have a lot of, we have every type of person that owns a piece of property in my neighborhood, from all over the country. Some that have started with nothing, some that, I don't know, maybe they found money in a bucket. But the fact of the matter is, some of them were concerned about it, and I think I represent a group of people that have some questions, and I have some questions, and therefore, I'll, I'll vote against it. But again, if it passes, it's not gonna really upset me too much either. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would just like to thank all of the wonderful people that have been involved in crafting this ordinance and coming out and showing your support. I grew up on a farm in Madison County. We were Madison County Farm Family of the Year, nineteen eighty-three. We had goats and chickens and cattle in a big garden and grew all of our own food, and as a result, we ate well. In fact, I didn't have sugar until I was over three years of age. We didn't have fast food or processed food, and I think that gave me an advantage health-wise growing up. The other thing that it did was it got me involved in 4H, because that's where we learned to, you know, care for our goats and show them in the county fair, and 4H helped me overcome crippling shyness and helped me gain confidence as a public speaker and as a leader. And I think that if it wasn't for that 4H experience that my farming background gave me, I wouldn't be here today on this council. So, I think that it's, it's more than just about food insecurity, but it's also learning opportunities and opportunities for, for stepping beyond kind of our comfort zones and getting away from the video games. As far as the neighborhood covenants, you know, there are many people such as myself that would rather live in a neighborhood with goats and chickens than people who are more concerned with maintaining a certain image. And I think that's becoming more and more common as young people grow up and, and buy homes. And how can this help, you know, address food insecurity? And, and there's this idea that there's these impoverished people, and there are, that are coming from kind of the generational poverty, but there's also the new kind of impoverished people, the people who had good jobs, that went to college and that lost those jobs during the recession. People like the, the long-term unemployed or that are now underemployed, and maybe are stuck with that mortgage that they can barely afford, but then there's not enough money left over at the end of the month to buy groceries. There are a lot of those people in our community, unfortunately, and this ordinance can help them and will. My goal for the, my garden this summer is to grow new food for myself and to share with my close friends and neighbors. And although it can be an expensive ordeal, I've had friends give me seeds. I've had, my grandmother gave me her old tiller. I have a friend who's tearing down a, a deck, and he's brought me the old wood to make raised beds. And by doing this, I've deepened my connections with my friends and my neighbors, and, and already, my garden is growing, even though I haven't planted the first seed. So, I think that this is a great thing for our community, and I like Alderman Kenyon's reference to victory gardens. So, let's plant some victory gardens and pass this ordinance.
Any other... Yes, Adella?
Mayor, I think, like I say, I think we started this discussion two weeks ago, saying we'd leave it on three readings, and so, I'm not gonna vote for it tonight, because I came thinking that I, we would talk about it tonight and another time, and so, I'm not gonna vote for it tonight. I'm gonna, because I want people to get their questions answered.
Okay.
I want them to have time to answer their questions. I want Alderman Kenyon to get more information about crafty goats. And so, I just think it's, it's too big a step for us to just jump into it, when we've said we're gonna give it three readings, so I will be voting against it tonight.
Okay. So, what's the wishes of the... Everybody wanna continue on, or you wanna wait? Well, 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 we've got a motion and a second on voting on it. Councilmember Petty, I believe that you made the motion.
Well, you know, I defer to the wishes of the council. I think we have five votes up here, but it's up to you guys.
Well, I think you'll have to pull your motion, but...
The only motion, if you don't wanna vote on it, then it needs a motion to table or a motion to reconsider the, the suspension of the rules, but other than that, there will be a vote tonight, because it has been read for the third time, and so, it is ready for a vote unless it is tabled.
Tabled. So, somebody can bring a motion to table, correct?
I might, I bring the motion to table, please.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to table. Sandra, would you call the robe?
Is that tabled to the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
No.
Tenet?
Yes.
Shotmire?
Yes.
It is tabled to the next meeting.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, thank y'all. All right, number two, we have amend ninety-two point oh-one definitions, ninety-two point two-three empowerment, and ninety-two point two-four redemption of animals. An ordinance to amend ninety-two point oh-one definitions, ninety-two point two-three empowerment, and ninety-two point two-four redemption of animals of the federal code to authorize the animal shelter to accept livestock and set the redemption fee for their release. Councilmember Long is not here. I'm sorry, Kit.
Why don't we have a motion to suspend the rules, so we can at least hold the second reading on this?
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Shotmire?
Yes.
In ordinance to amend Section ninety-two oh-one definitions, ninety-two point two-three empowerment, and ninety-two point two-four redemption of animals of the Fayetteville Code to authorize the animal shelters to accept livestock and to set the redemption fee for their release.
Okay, so I assume we'll just hold it here, right? Am I good with that?
Good.
It'll go to the second reading.
All right. Now, we're gonna come to a public hearing, which I will now open on Piggyback. Piggyback LLC, a resolution to grant a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Piggyback LLC for the operation of four taxi cabs in the city of Fayetteville. We will open it up to public hearing. I guess, Chief, you wanna address everybody first?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna fight through the crowd first. Thanks, Mayor, Council. We received an application for a certificate from Piggyback LLC. They're asking to be permitted for between four and fifteen electric vehicles. They have provided us all their necessary paperwork. You'll notice on their insurance, it's actually not an insurance policy, it's actually just a quote. They obviously didn't wanna have that outlay of an insurance policy until they saw if they were gonna be approved by you guys tonight. Just for some background information, we currently have five taxi cab companies permitted in Fayetteville. Now, there were six, but one of them's not operating anymore, is my understanding, and right now, we have a total of twenty-seven taxi cabs that are permitted in the city, which is down quite a bit from actually what it was last fall. We was up around forty last fall, down to twenty-seven right now. Try to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for the chief on this? Okay. Who else would like to address this, this public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor and the council. Before I start, I would like to hand everybody a flyer.
Would you introduce yourself?
My name, my name is Cole Stocking. I'm the owner of Piggyback.
Give it to your clerk, and she'll distribute it for you.
Like I said, my name is Cole Stocking. I'm currently a student at the University of Arkansas. I'm in, I graduate in May with my master's in business. First off, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna read a little page here that I prepared. "How can I produce a better alternative transportation for local Fayetteville patrons and students who pass on the opportunity to frequent our local establishments because of inconvenience? All of you have traveled, and I can bet that each of you has been somewhere and thought, 'That is a great idea. I wish there was something like that in Fayetteville.'" That is what I thought as soon as I took a ride on E-Frog, which is in Dallas. I think I'm a little, I'm, I'm even a little blind in regards to the effect it will have on Fayetteville. The university is nearing thirty thousand students. The city of Fayetteville has over a hundred thousand people in it on game days, the majority of which are a mile away from where I'm standing. Piggyback can create that into revenue. If we were to bring only three hundred students to this entertainment district during the day per week, that's a minimum of three thousand dollars of revenues for these local company, companies. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of untapped annual potential, just with three hundred passengers a week spending an average of ten dollars apiece. If we move patrons from Dixon Street to the games or vice versa, that gives these local companies another added stream of revenue. Instead of them paying another company in Bentonville, Rogers, or Springdale for lunch and drinks before they make the trek to Fayetteville, they can now come to Fayetteville, pay for parking, and utilize Piggyback. Tailgaters that set up at six or seven or eight in the morning now have the option to head to the entertainment area for breakfast or lunch before friends and families start to roll in. Piggyback will offer discounts and gift cards to passengers to local businesses that pay for our advertising. One of the ideas is to use something like Cash Cab. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with the game show Cash Cab or not, but riders would get into the cab, and then they ask them questions, and then they win money. We will have questions on the tablets inside the, the vehicles that ask about menu items, the history and product offerings of local businesses. If they get these questions correct, we'll provide them, provide them with gift cards to one of these companies. We will work through the seasons. The only thing that will shut us down is snow and ice. Other than that, we're running. Three things are for sure: We are safe, we are free, and we will have a positive impact on Fayetteville businesses. We wanna be a part of the growth of local businesses here in Fayetteville. The potential to do things in the city, to be a small business goldmine, is here. With the growth in Bentonville, the opportunities there, and the opportunities here in Fayetteville, NWA, NWA can be a desirable place for the rest of the country. We wanna differentiate ourselves from the competition. Now, we aren't a taxi. We are a ride. We are a carpool. But our goal isn't just to become strictly a transportation service. All patrons, old or young, will find an interest in this service, and I hope that includes you of the city council as well.
Okay. What questions do we have? Mark?
I think this is a great idea. I, coming from maybe a corporate background, I am concerned... It kinda reminds me of the pedicabs, because we do have individuals that are looking for a free ride, and I think that's good. And so, we're looking at this business model, knowing that we never had pedicabs that made it. Do you have a concern when you're thinking about this?
No, I don't, and I'm not sure why the pedicabs didn't succeed.
No one paid.
But with, with us, like our, our model, we're gonna have, and I don't, it's not listed on that flyer, but we'll have screens, tablets inside the vehicle that run scrolling advertisements continuously. I think what, they had maybe a couple advertisements on the outside of their pedicabs?
I don't think you're probably gonna be allowed to do that.
To have tablets inside the vehicle?
If they're visible from the outside and they're scrolling, it probably would not be legal.
They shouldn't be visible from the outside, though.
If they're not visible from the outside, then you're probably allowed.
Right, yeah, they'll be mounted on the ceiling, inside the vehicle. But as for that, I mean, it, it's gonna be a quick transportation. There's, it's not seasonal, like the pedicabs, no one's running when it's raining or when it's cold outside. And we're in a confined, concentrated area, apartment complexes, the dorm rooms, fraternity and sorority houses, the campus, obviously, and then, and this area as well.
Are you aware that one of the problems that the pedicab companies had is that they thought they'd be able to serve the university?
Are you aware that one of the problems that the pedicab companies had is that they thought they'd be able to serve the university and the games and stuff, and the university's not allowed them to do that? So that unless the university allows you to get on their property, you're not gonna be able to do that.
Yes, I have spoken with the university, and they told me that they allow six passes for game days. Um, stadium and Razorback, on the, the east side of the stadium, that is cut off for the bus system. Obviously, they don't want the congestion. But I'm looking at trying to access the crossroads, just to be able to cross underneath the stadium, and maybe drop and pick off on the corners of the streets there, and if not, just stay on the west, or the, the east side of the stadium.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
You have no plans to be on the trails at all, right?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Justin?
Um, fully electric?
Yes, sir.
Looks like. Um, looking at this map, where the perimeter looks like Weddington, North College, MLK, and I don't know if that's the access road. Can't take this thing on five forty, I wouldn't think.
Correct, no. And I won't be, I won't actually be on College, um, MLK, or Weddington. It'll be in the, the inside, the neighborhood areas, and so, the low-speed limit areas.
That was one of my questions, 'cause it, it was in blue here, and I thought, you're gonna run, and it's a long way from the corner of Weddington, all the way down here to Archibald Dale and MLK. Uh, how long does, does these things, do these things go on a charge?
Forty miles. Forty to forty-five miles. And, and around here, because of the hills, it's, it's, you know, there's gonna be some, some deviation there.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I wish you the best, and I appreciate your entrepreneurial spirit, and I... I'll wait till the police chief finishes talking. I never inter, I never interrupt a police chief. Just a rule of mine. Go ahead, sorry. Um, so, you have a charging station somewhere when these things get low, and an indicator and all that?
Yeah, the spot we're moving into is gonna be on Block Street, the Beaver Electric Building.
Oh, okay.
They're actually liquidating everything right now, and so, we're moving in there. I, I actually meet with the, the, the individual that purchased the property tomorrow. Um, but yes, I'll have charging, and luckily, it's an electric company, so it should be a pretty efficient building. But I will, yeah, charging station's inside there, the garage door, and we'll just enter through there.
Well, again, I appreciate your, and I applaud your spirit, and, uh, keeping the, the good ideas on business. People like you, we need you. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
What other questions do we have? Yes, Adele?
As someone who enjoyed, uh, pedicabs in the past, I think it's a great idea, and I, uh, thank you for bringing this idea to Fayetteville.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The good thing about this area is that we're surrounded by entrepreneurs, musicians, chefs, I mean, uh, outdoor enthusiasts, so it's, it's a cool area to actually come in and, and be creative, and, and we're given the ability to do so, so, thank you.
Um, I think I have a question for the Chief.
Should I hang around, or?
Yeah, you can hang, sure, absolutely. We don't want you going anywhere.
Yes, sir.
Are these, um, how do I need to put this? I know when I worked at the university, we drove a very small vehicle. They would not allow us on the, the main thoroughfares.
It, it is my understanding from the Department of Finance Administration that certain ones of these vehicles, if they have the appropriate safety equipment, are legal to be operated as a low-speed vehicle on city streets, which, that means if the maximum speed for the vehicle's thirty-five, then they're only allowed on streets that the speed limit's thirty-five and below. Now, I don't know exactly what that appropriate safety equipment is. Somehow, the Department of Finance Administration, when they look at the manufacturer's statement of, of origin for the vehicle, they can tell if it meets their qualifications for being street-legal and having an Arkansas vehicle license on it.
So, uh, Cole will have to go through the Department of Finance to make sure they're even legal to be on the streets, correct?
That's correct, and I think he's already had some discussions. There might be even a letter in your packet that, that talks about that.
I'm just, I wanna be sure that we don't cause a safety issue here. Okay, that's all I have. Okay.
Good question.
I'm good. Well, and so, uh, is there any other comments?
You ask a public comment now?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry, yes. Come on, come on, Ron.
Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers, my name is Bryce Curry. You see me up here before, Allen Dynasty Transportation. You know, I love an entrepreneurial spirit, and I believe in free enterprise. But I believe that all companies that are in the similar business must be on the same playing field. As far as taxi goes, I've talked or emailed some of my ideas on how to fix some of these problems that are now causing a lot of problems, and just how we maybe should look at what we need to address this either now or in the upcoming future. Now, as far as what is in front of us this evening is whether to approve another taxi company, 'cause this is a taxi company, to run in the city of Fayetteville. I don't know Mr. Stocking personally, so my opinion is not based on him personally or his concept. Only five days ago, I received an email from Mr. Stocking about this venture. So, left me with little time to study his new business proposal, and with another snow on the ground, it, it was even made me get a little bit more light into his adventure. What I have learned in the past couple of days, there are two of these vehicles that are in operation in northwest Arkansas. And I have been able to talk to one person that is in charge of one of these types of vehicles. The person asked that I do not mention their name or place of business, but did give me a lot of insight on this vehicle. First, the person that did talk with me rides a Harley motorcycle. And in this person's opinion, the motorcycle is much safer form of transportation than this gem car. It's spelled a G-E-M Polaris. The gem is designed for running around in an apartment complex, golf course, or maybe around the stadium. If roads are blocked, but not on the streets of Fayetteville with multiple passengers, this car is designed to hold six passengers. The person told me there was no way that they would feel safe in this vehicle, and they already operate one right now on their property. Um, they said they would not feel safe if this vehicle was put on the streets of Fayetteville, not only because of the speed that it is obtained, but because it is just like what it is. It is an oversized golf cart. Think about this. A thirty-five hundred dol, a thirty-five hundred pound car hitting this vehicle, or even a truck. There is no protection in this vehicle. Yes, it has seat belts, no airbags, no steel side panels, and a front end, and a front end that cannot take a crash. We all know that safety must be our first concern, and this vehicle is not what you wanna put on the streets, just like I don't put my SUV on a golf course. The only form of protection from a side collision is merely a piece of canvas. I personally feel that there would be a little more conversation on this topic besides five days that I've had. And you can research what I've presented to this council. The idea sounds great, but the reality of this venture is totally unsafe to our public, which you all serve. Just imagine on a busy weekend with a large amount of traffic we have in the town, that this vehicle got hit on a side collision, and there were six people inside this vehicle, or this oversized go-kart. Chances of anyone coming out unhurt would be almost unlikely or impossible. Again, we saw the perimeter, I saw it on the deal, about the speed limits. This car is only designed to be able to be put on by the Department of Finance in areas that have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Anything over that twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, this car cannot be on that, that particular street. Again, I don't ring the run, the dream of Mr. Stocking, but I don't believe that this was well thought out. It carries a very large liability. I could get into a lot more that I have learned about this vehicle, but I don't believe, I believe that maybe I, hopefully, I've made my point, and hope everyone does hereby, uh, does a responsible thing on approving this permit. I can tell you right now, from past experience with Dynasty, that I have had two cars in pretty heavy collision accidents. One was a side collision accident on Weddington. This car is supposedly gonna be on Weddington. My car was totally totaled, airbags blown on all sides. If it wasn't for the fact of the steel frames inside that door, I would've probably lost my manager of this company. The person ran a stoplight. I'm not saying that the drivers of the gem cars won't be responsible, won't be safe, but it's not their problem that if somebody runs a stoplight, that hits them. You have six passengers that can ride in this car. You put six passengers in this car, and it's also not designed for very big people. It's designed for a smaller body-sized person. This car can only go thirty miles before it runs out of a charge. Now, this is the specs that I've read on this car. There may be something that's different. I didn't have a lot of time to research a lot about this car. But in thirty miles, that means that if he did his distance that he said, and he does it two times, and all of a sudden, he's out of power, he's gonna have to call a cab to come get the people that are in the car, 'cause he's out of power. I've had a head-on collision with one of our cars. A head-on collision is nasty. It's gonna blow airbags. It's gonna throw people to the front of the car. This gem car, if you research it, it cannot take a head-on collision. You will totally wipe this car out, and you will probably wipe out every passenger that's in this car. Again, Mr. Stocking, I love his idea. I thought it was great when I read about it. But again, like the pedicab giving free rides and putting customers in danger, I think y'all need to consider this. Now, I know I don't get to walk back up here and talk again, unless you ask me. But there are other things that I know about this car, but I think that if you talk to Mr. Stocking, and you take a look at this whole project, that you are looking at something that really is gonna be out there that's very dangerous. This belongs on a golf course. It belongs around a complex. It does not belong on our city streets. I thank y'all for listening to me.
All right, who else would like to address us on this?
My name is Chance Combs. I'm a resident of Fayetteville, a student at the University of Arkansas, and a friend of Mr. Stocking. Um, as his friend, I, I can say that I've been, been able to watch this idea take shape, and I can assure you that he's, he's thought of all this. He's planned and planned. He's spent lots, lots of personal time on it. Not only that, I wanna point out that, and I hate to compare these things to these pedicabs, because they're quite different, and they're even different from a taxi, but in terms of safety, and because of what was just brought up, is, this is gonna be more safe than a pedicab, for sure. If not, I, I will stand corrected, but, uh, it seems to logic that, at least this thing, the way that it's structured, is gonna be safer. Um, not only that, um, we, we've all recognized the entrepreneurial spirit of this, and, and that's awesome. I'm glad that the council supports those things. But, uh, I can just, I can imagine that opposition to the pedicabs was similar to the opposition to this. And I understand that, uh, threat of competition is, is a serious thing in business. But, uh, take, I, I hope that Mr. Stocking has an opportunity to, to speak again if you have questions for him, because I feel like he can address some of this, and I hope that I did as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't think you really got to finish, Mr. Stocking. I think that I had you sat down. It's my fault.
Police chief comes first, I understand.
Well, I just wanted to ask him a question.
No, I understand.
What questions do we have, Mr. Stocking, on this? Counsel?
I have a question, actually, for the police chief. This kinda reminds me of these little hoots.
You can come back.
Hoot-to-scoot things that I'm seeing around town. Have we had any accidents with those that?
I'm, I'm not aware of any accidents involving those.
Because they're kind of a little...
Similar.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll set you down again, Mr. Stock. What, any, any questions?
I do, I do hope that, that you'll reconsider your route. I don't think, maybe this should be on MLK, you know? And I, I hear you saying it's not going to be, but that's what we got in our packet.
Yeah, no, it's absolutely not.
And that was the concern I had before I came to the meeting this week.
Will not access any other, any of the main roads, no, not at all.
And so, uh, and I don't think that you would get authorized to do that anyway on a vehicle like this, from what I understand. So, uh, that, that answers one of my concerns. And, you know, some people do have a problem driving at night, and I have a good friend that wants to get downtown from over kind of a little ways down. And it would be nice if, if there was a, something like this. I can see all sorts of advantages. So, I certainly support it, but I do think that there has to be a great deal of caution, and I, I have, I do hope the best for you and your business model, because I, I, as an, as an investor, would have to see a profit-loss estimation with real numbers before I would invest in it.
Absolutely.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with charging someone for a ride, in my opinion, but that's up to you. This is your business model. I think we all take risks every day. If I saw this, I would think that there might be a risk associated riding in it, but if I was on a, uh, street that was not heavily traveled, I probably would take the risk, rather than if I had, not that I ever would, of course, but if I had a few drinks, uh, or something, this is a nice alternative, for a short run. And I live very close to maybe where I might have a few drinks, if I were to have a few drinks. Uh, so, I, I see an opportunity here, and, uh, I appreciate your, your presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, is, do we have any more questions from Mr. Stocking on it? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, any other public comment? Did I get all of that? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I do need to point out one thing. According to the chief, his application was from four to fifteen, uh, of these vehicles. The resolution was written for four.
Yes, what I have.
If you wish to, uh, pass the resolution, and if you wish to grant any, uh, more authority than four, uh, then you would need to have a motion to amend the resolution to whatever number you believe would be more appropriate.
Well, I guess first I better close it to public.
Oh, well, I thought you'd already...
No, I didn't. I brought...
I have a question.
Oh, I'm certainly, well, you can, you can do that, Mark, anyway.
Or the police chief. I don't know who can answer this. Does that mean four in use on this trail, uh, on this, at one time, or four period?
I would have four total. More than likely, three will be running at a time, 'cause I need to keep one charged. And, um, also, the, I only put fifteen on there, just to not handcuff me for years down the road. I, I don't ever see us putting fifteen of these on the road. I don't, that's not gonna happen. Maybe eight or nine, you know, at, at, once the demand picks up for it, but fifteen, I, I just, I talked with Sergeant Harder about this, and I just, I told him that, and he told me, "Just go ahead and, and put a higher number on there, just in case."
Kit, I have a question. Uh, I, I think this is a, a question for you. If, if we limit it to four, if we pass it as it says, four taxi cabs, or, and he's successful and wants to up it to eight, is there anything keeping him from doing that at any time, to come back and?
Well, he would have to come back and, and, and ask the city council for that additional authority.
Yeah, he would just have to come back and ask for more, if he's successful, so...
That's correct.
I, I think we just do it the way it's written, and then if he's successful, he comes back and asks to up it to eight.
And you're confident in your business model for?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Yep, my original plan was, I, I, I forecasted that, forecasted that at least three to every six months, I would probably need to add a car up until the, you know, the, the limit of maybe eight or nine.
Would you like, uh, us to amend? I would be happy to amend the resolution if you needed us to, for consideration, to ten.
To ten? Yeah, that would be, that would be perfect.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the resolution to make it instead of four. Four to ten, or just ten, or four to?
Just, just have one number as the maximum, whatever.
Up to ten, I guess.
Okay, okay.
Because I think they're not gonna stay charged. I don't know.
So, you're saying ten now?
Ten.
That's the motion?
Okay, that's the motion.
All right.
Sarah, are you seconded, Ed?
Yes, she did.
Okay. Um, what discussion do we have on the amendment? This is time for public comment, if there's any. Okay, we'll run it back to the council. We have a motion and a second for ten.
To amend it to ten.
To amend it to ten, taxi cabs, correct? Am I good with that? All right. Any other discussion among that, among you, with you, for you? Anyway, having said all that, so how do would you please call the roll?
Adams, yes. Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Adam, yes. Gray, yes. Marsh, yes. Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Okay.
I move we pass the resolution.
All right. We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any comments or discussion on that? Okay.
I realize that there has been some safety concern, but I ride a scooter, and it's probably a lot more dangerous than these. And I wear a helmet, but a lot of students and probably the typical people who would be riding this don't. So, I think that, you know, if the Department of Motor Vehicles is permitting these things, and that will let them handle the safety concerns. I'm really excited because I think it will enable people to come to our downtown and catch a show at the Walton Art Center, and then catch one of these up to the square and go to Vetro, and, you know, spend some more money downtown. And then if they have too much to drink or their feet hurt, they don't have to worry about getting home. So, I'm excited about this.
Well, me too, but the chief and I have to keep everything safe around here, too. And so, I always have to ask the safety questions, because that's always a concern of mine.
That's a good question.
I'm okay. Any other comments? All right. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Adam, yes. Gray, yes. Marsh, yes. Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving along to new business. Does the council want a break, or do you want to continue on?
Keep going.
All right. Everybody good? All right, here we go. All right, under new business, number one, 2014 overlay sidewalk projects. Resolution to approve the Transportation Division's overlay sidewalk projects list for 2014. Terry?
Evening, Councilman Mayor. We took this to the Transportation Committee on the February 11th. It was approved there and sent forward. I think everyone's seen the list. We tried to talk with everyone prior to that meeting and get their impact and feedback on that. So, I believe we've got something that everyone was happy with, and if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
What question do you have, Terry? Yes?
After this was published, of course, in my neighborhood, I got questions. Of course, I did. There's been a plan to put sidewalks up and down Park Street to have access to Washington, going north and south through the Wilson Park neighborhood. And it's been considered, I guess, for a very long time, but again, it's not considered another year. I was wondering if there was any discussion on that, or, because it had been, it's been discussed last night.
Yeah.
And I did not bring it to you earlier, because no one brought it to me, but it has, it's caused a concern with individuals that have kids going to Washington School.
Yeah.
Just-
It just did not make the list. This year, we tried to look at it and talk to each ward representative and let them pick the ones they thought prioritized how they wished. We've not had a request for it recently. We'd had issues when we'd looked at it before on looking at putting it on the east side. We had some utility poles and utility issues, unless we narrowed the street. Then we had had different people talk to us about willing to narrow it, give up parking, and such as that. So, we'd not put it on this year's list. We can look at it for next year's list, or else we'll be happy to entertain. If you want to put that on there, we just have to know what we're gonna take off.
I needed to bring it up, because it has been brought up to me, and we have discussed it in the past, and for it not to show up after being on a contingency list in the past, I guess that we're looking for some reason. I mentioned the same reasons that you just mentioned to me. And I hope next year, it'll be reconsidered as we bring it to the committee. I'm not on that committee, but I know that the committee works hard to get the biggest return on investment, but there was a concern of why this was a contingent project in the past, and now it seems to have fallen off the radar.
I'll make sure it's on that list, and then we will talk about you and Matthew as far as prioritizing that out, and it'll be one of the ones you can select from.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, because we're gonna be spending about $1.5 million a year for the next lease.
Well, they thought part of that $1.5 should be up and down Park.
Totally understand. If you don't make it this year, I'm probably gonna assure you it'll make it next year.
I just was gonna add a comment. We did change our process a little bit this year. Typically, in the past, the staff puts together a list, and that's what we bring to the street committee. We tried this year to provide to each ward every item we had received, a telephone call on, whether it was a request for traffic calming, a street overlay, a sidewalk, curb and gutter, so that you could really have everything. We do have limited resources. We have limited staff time, and we have limited calendar dates. And so, what we have in front of you today is what we believe to be the consensus as you prioritized it. So, I just wanted to let Alderman Kenyon know that if you all want a change, this would be the meeting that you'd make that. The only requirement is, it is designated to fit within the twelve-month calendar period. So, we would have to take something that would be an equivalent time project off to add it on there. We also have a longstanding history of being very aggressive in this plan, and every year in the year with a project that was on it, that gets pushed forward or just gets started. This year, we had that happen in Ward Four, where Sang and Hassel, I can remember Council, former Councilmember Lucas saying that thing's been on a plan for two years, and Councilmember Adams calling us in the mid-year going, "When are you starting this project?" And normally, what happens is, if we have major flooding, an ice storm, certain projects that crop up, this division that does this is the division we use as kind of drainage issues, plane issues that often sometimes get delayed. So, we're trying to not have that be the case going forward by sticking a little bit harder to our list that you give us, and as items come up, starting a new wish and needs list for you to look at next year during this discussion time period, only because what happened for the last several years is, we'll get a call, and if we think we can try to fit it in, we put it on the list. Might be a short project we can fit in in an interim period when we're waiting on right-of-way acquisition or things in some of the other projects. And then a project that wasn't on the list gets done, and one that was gets delayed. And so, we're trying to not have that happen in the future. And so, I just wanted you to understand why we're having that change in this.
I very earnestly understand that. But I also do understand, and I will repeat, that Park Street was on the list in the past, and it's fallen off. That was the concern.
Well, we'll put it back on the list.
So, we, I think that's what we need to do next year, is to remember that this is something that has been on the list in the past that has fallen off, and it's just, I come on, I mean, it's going to an elementary school, and there is a lot of children that walk up and down this, this street. Really, it's really, there's a lot of kids that walk up and down the street, and as we get more density in this central part of town, we're getting more traffic. And so, that was the concern, and I do, I felt, I don't want to change anything in this tonight, but I do want to be sure that we keep it in the forefront next year and not let this fall off in the future.
We heard you loud and clear. It will be on your list for prioritization.
Thank you.
You, I promise.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was gonna ask tonight, kind of related to what you just said, but I was going to ask, Terry, how's all of this ice and weather, and it looks to me like we have some new damage to streets and sidewalks that weren't there when we made this list. Are we gonna see some need for your crews to be pulled off of these plans, to fix other things?
All the street stuff will be taken by the overlay crew, so that won't really affect the sidewalk plan. And we've got plenty of time on the overlay side due to all the construction in town. We're not overly aggressive this year in pursuing tearing up more. So, they'll have plenty of time to do any repairs that have come up from the winter weather. So-
Will there be a lot of those, Terry? It sounds like I'm hearing some citizens point out some holes and things that maybe have been caused by the-
Well, I mean, it always leads to something. You know, if you've got cracking on a street and you get freestyle, freestyle, you're gonna have that pothole appear. As quick as this is over, just like we did on the last one, we went out and immediately patched them. As quick as, we won't be doing quite as long this time with asphalt plants, because they tend to shut down in January, so it's hard to get asphalt where they're open now. So, as quick as this is over, we'll be out patching them.
You did do a great job of getting out on at least one that I'm very aware of, so thank you very much. Appreciate you.
I'll number that also, that we tend to see those damage results when we get out of freezing weather and into wet weather, because where roads have cracked and where we get those items when penetrated by the water creates even more damage. So, we do anticipate some, just as every other city in Northwest Arkansas is anticipating greater road repair. I think a point that I don't want to go get unnoticed that Terry made is, because we have so many major road bond issues taking place, we tried not to have every other road under construction in our overlay plan. So, we do have some capacity for repairs if we identify that in the spring.
Thank you. That's great.
Yes, I will have to admit, the chief of staff, staff kinda keeping rain down. I would probably have us relatively landlocked.
But if we don't, if the weather doesn't quit, I'll be back with our ordinance for-
Tend to be a little aggressive.
I thought you might do that.
Okay.
Move we pass the resolution.
Second?
Okay. Any final comments from the council on this? Yes, Sarah?
I just wanted to say that how pleased I am to see South School Avenue included on this list. You know, that is a neighborhood commercial district with a lot of small businesses there and a high pedestrian count. You know, every time I drive up and down that street, there are many people walking, and these are people that are walking primarily to get to jobs, to access groceries. And so, it's really important that they are no longer relegated to the ditch or the weed barrier. So, thank you for including South School.
Okay. But I want the public to know, and I know the council knows, that we're going from about 10,000 running feet a year to 32,000 running feet. That is a tremendous accomplishment. I mean, that is the most we've ever done in the history of this city. We will continue to continue to fund the sidewalk program to about, to the tune of about $1.3 to $1.5 million a year. So, sidewalks, we will truly make the city a walkable community with this program, and I certainly want to thank you all for your support on this.
Mayor, we just might add that this is your transportation sales tax that was voted on statewide, and the portion increases revenue from that tax collection.
And we've put ours in public transportation and sidewalks.
Public transit and sidewalks.
Yes. Okay. Well, if there's no other comments, Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Adam, yes. Gray, yes. Marsh, yes. Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
All right. Number two. Partners for Better Housing, Workforce Housing, Resolution to express the city council's intent to sell a strip of land east of the new parking deck along School Avenue to Partners for Better Housing, screen the deck and provide workforce housing. Matt, would you like to kick us off on that?
Yes, thank you. For those of you that were there, this is a follow-up to the Agenda Session presentation that we had about four or five weeks ago from Rob Sharpe at Partners for Better Housing. This just states that our intent is to pursue this. There's nothing that commits us to that plan of action, but it lets partners know and the potential developer of this site know that we're serious and that we're interested in developing that in a serious way. I would like to update you on two things. The first is that based on conversations with the Walton Art Center, they expressed an interest in seeing ground floor retail there. I told you this at Agenda Session, but for the public. And that's okay with us. That's okay with partners. In theory, again, this is not something that we've committed to. It's something to explore. I don't want anybody to be surprised by that if that's the plan that comes about, or the proposal that comes about. And the logic on that would be, originally, we spoke about using market rate residential units to subsidize the affordable units in order to make them affordable, and this would be the same idea using retail space for that subsidy. The last thing is that based on very preliminary numbers, very preliminary numbers from our design team, Jeremy shared this with me today, we're looking at a potential savings of more than $300,000 by going forward with this plan instead of the original design. So, that makes it even more important that we can get a proposal in place through partners. I think that's really exciting. It only makes me wish we had pursued something like this at the beginning, so we could have done this on the other side, too. But I look forward to bringing forward you a proposal in a couple months.
Good. Good. Well done. Thank you. Any questions from the council on this? Any public comment on this? Okey-dokey. Bringing it back to the council.
Move we pass the resolution.
Motion and second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Adam, yes. Gray, yes. Marsh, yes. Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Okay. Number three, 2014 employee compensation adjustment. Resolution to approve a budget adjustment, an amount of $1,216,000 to fund the citywide 2014 employee compensation adjustment. Paul?
As we discussed at the Agenda Session, the mayor's compensation plan provides for approximately 3.8% salary increase. It provides for steps for police and fire, and a 3.8% pool to be distributed to merit employees based on their performance. Cost of that plan is $804,000 to the general fund, $1.2 million to all funds. The full impact of it going forward is $824,000 going forward into the New Year's, and $1,233,000 overall. The reason that that's about the same for this year as it is for future years are it provides for service awards for employees who are at the top of their range. This would be a one-time payment, would not go into their base, but would compensate them for performance this year. I want to hit some of the significant points we talked about at the Agenda Session, because I think it's important, especially for the public to view. Last year, as I reported, we had an $870,000 surplus. Cost of this plan this year to the general fund is $804,000. So, in other words, that surplus would cover those increases for 2013, provided on the revenue, hitting the estimates that we forecasted, which was 2%. Now, we're down $96,000 after the first month. However, I still feel we can meet that revenue estimate. So, we would pay for that this year based on what the surplus was last year, making us no worse off than what my projection had been last June at this point in time. That would be about $7.3 million in the general fund in what we call free reserves. Now, we've already approved Mount Kessler, that contrast going forward. That would give us about $5.7 million worth of free reserves. The other thing I wanted to point out is that, I want you to understand the downside. The downside is to continue it in 2015, we would need a 3.6% sales tax increase to keep it going in forward years. That's to keep that $824,000 going. However, there are two sides to this coin, and that's the last point. This is also based on money management. It's not just risking that the revenue is going to go up to that degree. Two sides to the coin is, we have the revenue, which we hope goes up 2% as we estimated. We've got the expenditure side and the management of that expenditure budget. I think the mayor and administration have demonstrated that we've handled that management of the expenditure budget very well since the year 2009. When we first, when the mayor first took office, we had a recession. So, there's two sides of a coin. If the revenue doesn't keep pace, then it's all about expenditure management. I think the mayor's demonstrated that we've done that in the past. He's already committed to do that in the future to keep us going. But again, the surplus that was earned in 2013 would pay for this year. Going forward, if all we talk about is revenue, we'd be 3.6. But on the flip side of that coin is the money management or the management of that expenditure budget. We hope we- But again, the surplus that was earned in 2013 would pay for this year. Going forward, if all we talk about is revenue, we'd be 3.6. But on the flip side of that coin is the money management or the management of that expenditure budget. We hope we won't have to spend all of it, but I can't commit that to you. It's certainly forecasted on the conservative side, which is the high side in expenditures. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, we have Paul on this. Okay. Now, do we have any public comment on this? We'll now bring you back to the council.
Move, we pass the resolution.
Second. Thank you. Uh, we have motion second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council on this?
Actually, I'd like to propose an amendment, um, with the resolution, with the motion on the floor. May I do that?
Uh, I suppose you...
Yes, uh, you can, uh, well, yeah, you can propose an amendment.
I would just like to, uh, propose that we include the city council in the compensation adjustments. Um, I know it's a sensitive issue to vote for our own raises, but I think by tying our salaries to our employees' salary, it's a fair and reasonable strategy to keep our compensation appropriate.
So what would that be?
Um, well, we, this adjustment is for 3.8% for our employees, and we weren't included in the last adjustment that we gave our employees either, so I believe about 8%, but whatever it is, um, just so that we're tied to the employees' raises.
I'm sorry, what was the last question?
Um, what is the total amount of percentage-wise that we've raised our employee's salary, including this and then the one last year?
The one last year? We have to remember. I can't tell you off the top of my head, because it was different, in different areas. Uh, it's probab-, it's probably in the 8% or more area. Fire was increased by 11.5% last year. Uh, police were 7.5, I believe it was, and the employees were 4%, but some ra-, ranges were, uh, brought up. Now, remember last year incorporated in the plan was to bring it up to a salary range based on a salary survey, so that distorted it. If we just look at the, um, the portion that would apply to this year, would probably be about a 3.8% also. But remember last year, the raises were, the ranges were brought up, which rather distorts it.
Well, if, you know, if we could just take the average of last year plus this year, so that we're raising our rate at the same rate that we raise employees' rates. I know a lot of people have come to me thinking about running for city council, and then they find out how much it pays, and they don't do it. Um, and while that may be job security for us, I don't want to think that, um, people would be limited by the pay, uh, because I feel like there are portions of our communities, cross-sections of our community, they're not being represented here, and, uh, that may be tied to compensation. So I think this is a fair way to keep our compensation in check with our employees.
Okay, so then, Sarah, then I'm just trying to figure this out. That would be about a 7% increase, correct?
That sounds, if that's what Paul thinks it is.
So is there a second for that, uh, motion? Okay, it dies for lack of a second.
Yes.
Um, I agree with everything you said, especially about encouraging people to run.
Me, too.
Um, and I might even be able to be convinced to support something like that, but not tonight, because it's A, sudden, and B, I really don't think it's a good idea to tie our raises to employee raises, if only because there may come a time in the future, and I'm, and I say this, I'm a big supporter of the compensation plan that's been proposed. I'm going to vote for it emphatically. I voted for every other one that's been proposed. But there may come a time in the future where we're not able to do that, and I don't want to have the motivation of my own pay to be tied when the city might be in such dire straits. Um, I don't want even to give somebody the opportunity to accuse me of something like that. Um, right now, the way the ordinance was, is written is that, uh, our pay goes up when the mayor's pay goes up. Um, maybe that's not perfect, um, and maybe it should be changed. Like I said, I agree with your points, um, but I think if we're going to have that conversation, we should probably have that as a standalone conversation, so that we can have it, so that we can shed light on that issue alone, um, rather than, uh, in my opinion, clouding another decision.
Okay.
I actually have a comment. I, I would, I would be willing to explore more options with, uh, Councilman Marsh, too. I, I don't like to think that we're excluding anyone from the opportunity to serve their community, and, um, I, I've got to think about this one deeply. Um, I, I don't want it tied to this, but I would be happy to, uh, look into options and see what the concerns are, and to evaluate it and go forward with that. If we can show that this is going to somehow enable another individual that otherwise feels like they cannot afford to be active in the community, uh, the opportunity. So I, I don't want you to think it's, it's, I'm closed to it. No one wants to think that they're, uh, an elitist group that is, uh, representing a community. It should be inclusive, it should be diverse, and, uh, I certainly, I think we do have an inclusive and diverse city council currently, and I have, I, I'm, I'm very proud of the group that, that I've worked with, but I can't tie it to this, this specific legislation today.
All right. Where were we? We had a motion...
Ray, you're back to the original motion to pass the resolution.
Okay. What final comments from the council on this? Um, I, uh, I think that we certainly, this is a pay plan that, this is almost identical to what we did last year, and we have managed to manage the finances and with the revenue, we've pretty much got this raise covered. Now, next year's next year. Now, I don't know what next year holds, but I know right now, today, that we have the money to cover these raises. Now, what the fall brings, we'll just see. Because every year, we make, oh, we'll say, well, he thinks we're going to bring in X. You have to do that. And if, if you, if you wait for a, a sure thing, then you might not ever give raises. Eventually, you just have to say, okay, this is what we believe is going to grow, and I know that this weekend, I was called Saint Nick, so I thought I'd wear red tonight, and, uh, but I, I believe in, uh, I believe that one of the greatest investments that we can make is in the staff, our support staff that keeps this city going. And there may come a time we may not be able to give the type of raises we're giving right now. I don't know. But right now, at this moment in time, we can, and I think we should. Yes, Marsh?
There was another thing that we talked about at the agenda session, and it's, it's very clearly outlined, if you look at the, uh, paperwork that we have to support it. But all of this is not tied to sales tax and general revenue.
Right.
Uh, some of it is the enterprise fund, so it, uh, we have to look at the impact of the enterprise fund with the, uh, water sewer solid waste. We're, we're getting ready to, uh, look at a review, uh, of rates, and so just to, for full disclosure, uh, the Water Sewer Solid Waste Committee also will have to, uh, consider that as we move forward. And luckily tonight, the next item, I believe, is a, a savings measure that will co-, cover the cost of this for that division. Uh, we're not going to have that opportunity every year. Uh, well, maybe we will. I don't know. But, but, but that will be the next thing we discuss. So I did want to mention that, that it, uh, is certainly of utmost concern of the, uh, members of the Water Sewer Solid Waste Committee and the impact on the enterprise fund as well as the general revenue.
Okay. Also, uh, next this coming year, and, and I, I have, I have one employee group that some, the firemen are still below market. We're going to be looking at bringing them up to market in the next budget session. Now, I don't know how that's all going to work out, but we will see. Um, but it's something that is one of the goals. All right.
Here, can I make one comment? This is just for the staff that might be watching this tonight. One of the reasons that this request is even possible is because of good financial management of our staff, not having a mentality to spend your budget or lose it, understanding that saving $862,000 from the appropriated budget gives us an opportunity to even have this discussion, and is paying for the request for 2014 through expense reductions and savings of 2013. And I want to thank them for their efforts as they, um, bought into our request to only do what is needed without affecting citizen services. Thank you.
Okay. All right, there's no other comments. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Adam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kettie?
Yes.
Kinnit?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much. Okay. Number four. Water and Sewer System Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2014. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $7,500,000 of Water and Sewer System Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2014 by the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding Water and Sewer System Revenue Bonds Series 2009, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fourth supplemental trust indenture pursuant to whi-, to which the Series 2014 bonds will be issued and secured, authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement pursuant to which the Series 2014 bonds will be offered, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement providing for the sale of the Series 2014 bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of an escrow deposit agreement providing for the redemption of Series 2009 bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a continuing disclosure agreement prescribing other matters relating thereto. Paul?
Uh, let me read the ordinance.
Yes, indeed.
It's going to be filed. Whereas the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, a city of the first class, presently owns and operates a public water and sewer utility system, the system, serving the residents of the city and its environs, and whereas the city is authorized and empowered under the provisions, uh, of the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arkansas, including particularly Amendment 65 to the Constitution and Arkansas Code annotated, Sections 14164401 at SEC, and Sections 14234201 at SEC, and Sections 14-235-201 at SEC, collectively and as from time to time amended, the quote "authorizing legislation" unquote, to issue and sell its water and sewer revenue bonds and to expend the proceeds thereof to finance the cost of acquisition, construction, equipping, improving, maintaining, operating, and repairing the system, and to refund any bonds issued under eye, under the authorizing legislation. And whereas pursuant to the provisions of Ordinance Number 5496 of the city, adopted and approved on April 17th, 2012, the city has previously issued its Water and Sewer System Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2012 in the original principal amount of $3,665,000 for the purpose of refunding outstanding bonds of the city previously issued to finance and refinance the cost of improvements to the system. And whereas in accordance with the provisions of the authorizing legislation, the city is now determined to issue its Water and Sewer System Refunding Bonds Series 2014 in the aggregate amount, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $7.5 million for the purpose of refunding all of the outstanding Series 2009 bonds and paying, printing, underwriting, legal, and other expenses incidental to the issuance of the Series 2014 bonds. And where the city has determined to issue and secure the Series 2014 bonds on a parity basis with its outstanding Series 2012 bonds pursuant to that certain trust indenture dated as of May 1st, 2002, as amended and supplemented by a first supplemental trust indenture dated as of May 1, 2004, by a second supplemental trust indenture dated as of June 1st, 2009, and by a third supplemental trust indenture dated as of May 15th, 2012, as amended and supplemented the original indenture, binding between the city and BOKF, N.A., doing business as the Bank of Oklahoma, and formerly the Bank of Oklahoma, N.A., of Tulsa, Oklahoma, which will be referred to as the Bank of Oklahoma, as trustee, the trustee, and as such, original indenture may be amended and supplemented pursuant to the fourth supplemental trust indenture binding between the city and trustee, a form of which fourth supplemental trust indenture has been presented to and is before this meeting. And whereas the city proposes to enter into a bond purchase agreement in substantially the form presented to and before this meeting with Stevens Incorporated Fayetteville, Arkansas, the underwriter, providing for the sale of, of the Series 2014 bonds. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas. Section one, the city council hereby finds and declares that the current refunding of the Series 2009 bonds is in the best interest of the city and the customers of the system due to the reduction of the interest expense related to the indebtedness represented by the Series 2009 bonds. Section two, under the authority of the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas, including particularly Amendment 65 to the Constitution of Arkansas and the authorizing legislation, there is hereby authorized the issuance of bonds of the city to be designated the Water and Sewer System Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2014. The Series 2014 bonds shall be issued in the original aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $7,500,000, shall mature not later than August 15th, 2020, and shall bear, bear interest at the rate specified in the bond purchase agreement. The average yield on the Series 2014 bonds shall not exceed 2.75% per annum. The proceeds of the Series 2014 bonds will be utilized, along with other available monies, to effect a current refunding of the Series 2009 bonds and to pay printing, underwriting, legal, and other expenses incidental to the issuance of the Series 2014 bonds. The Series 2014 bonds shall be issued in the forms and denominations, shall be dated, shall be numbered, shall mature, shall be subject to redemption prior to maturity, and shall contain such other terms, covenants, and conditions, all as set forth in the original indenture as amended and supplemented by the fourth supplemental indenture. The Series 2014 bonds shall be issued and secured by the net revenues of the system on a parity basis with the pledge of net revenues securing the outstanding Series 2012 bonds. The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to the, the Series 2014 bonds in substantially the form thereof contained in the fourth supplemental indenture submitted to this meeting, and the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver the Series 2014 bonds and to affix the seal of the city thereto, and the mayor and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to cause the Series 2014 bonds to be accepted and authenticated by the trustee. The mayor is hereby authorized, conferred with the trustee, the underwriter, and Cootock Rock LLP, Little Rock, Arkansas Bond Council, in order to complete the Series 2014 bonds in substantially the form contained in the fourth supplemental indenture submitted to this meeting, with such changes as shall be approved by such persons executing the Series 2014 bonds, their execution to constitute conclusive evidence of such approval. Section three, to prescribe the terms and conditions upon which the Series 2014 bonds are to be executed, authenticated, issued, accepted, held, and secured, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute and acknowledge the fourth supplemental trust indenture binding between the city and the trustee. The city, and the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to execute and acknowledge the fourth supplemental indenture and to affix the seal of the city thereto, and the mayor and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to cause the fourth supplemental indenture to be accepted, executed, and acknowledged by the trustee. The fourth supplemental indenture is hereby approved in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, including without limitation of provisions thereof pertaining to the pledge of the system net revenues to the Series 2014 bonds and the terms of the Series 2014 bonds. The mayor is hereby authorized, conferred with the trustee, the underwriter, and bond council, in order to complete the fourth supplemental indenture fourth supplemental indenture, their execution to constitute conclusive evidence of such approval. Advice is given that a copy of the fourth supplemental indenture in substantially the form authorized to be executed is on file with the city clerk and is available for inspection by any interested person. Section four. There is hereby authorized and approved a preliminary official statement of the city, including the cover page and dependencies attached thereto relating to the series 2014 bonds. The preliminary official statement is hereby deemed final by the city within the meaning of the United States Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15C2-12. The distribution of the preliminary official statement is hereby approved. The preliminary official statement, as amended to conform the terms of the bond purchase agreement, including Exhibit A thereto, and with such other changes and amendments as are mutually agreed to by the city and the underwriter, is hereby referred to as the quote "official statement," and the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the official statement for and on behalf of the city. The official statement is hereby approved in substantially the form of the preliminary official statement submitted to this meeting, and the mayor is hereby authorized to confer with the trustee, the underwriter, and bond council in order to complete the official statement in substantially the form of the preliminary official statement submitted to this meeting with such changes as shall be approved by such persons, the mayor's execution to constitute conclusive evidence of such approval. Advice is given that a copy of the preliminary official statement is on file with the city clerk and available for inspection by any interested person. Section five. In order to prescribe the terms and conditions upon which the series 2014 bonds are to be sold to the underwriter, the mayor is authorized and directed to execute a bond purchase agreement on behalf of the city to be dated as of the date of this execution, by and between the city and the underwriter, and the bond purchase agreement is hereby approved in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, and the mayor is hereby authorized confer with the underwriter, bond, and bond council in order to complete the bond purchase agreement in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, with such changes as shall be approved by such persons executing the bond purchase agreement and their execution to constitute conclusive evidence of such approval. Advice is given that a copy of the bond purchase agreement in substantially the form authorized to be executed is on file with the city clerk and is available for inspection by any interested person. Section six. In order to provide for the redemption of the series 2009 bonds, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute an escrow deposit agreement to be dated as of the date of this execution by and between the city and the Bank of Oklahoma as escrow trustee, and the mayor is hereby authorized directed to cause the escrow agreement to be executed by the escrow trustee. The escrow agreement is hereby approved in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, and the mayor is hereby authorized confer with the escrow trustee, underwriter, and bond council in order to complete the escrow agreement in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, with such changes as shall be approved by such persons executing the escrow agreement, their execution to constitute conclusive evidence of such approval, and advice is given that a copy of the escrow agreement in substantially the form authorized to be executed is on file with the city clerk and is available for inspection by any interested person. Section seven. In order to provide for continuing disclosure of certain financial and operating information with respect to the city and the system in compliance with provisions of Rule 15C2-12 of the United States Securities and Exchange Commission, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a continuing disclosure agreement to be dated as of the date of its execution by and between the city and the Bank of Oklahoma as dissemination agent, and the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to cause continuing disclosure agreement to be executed by the dissemination agent. The continuing disclosure agreement is hereby approved in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, and the mayor is hereby authorized confer with the dissemination agent, underwriter, and bond council in order to complete the continuing disclosure agreement in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, with such changes as shall be approved by such persons executing the continuing disclosure agreement, their execution to constitute conclusive evidence of such approval. Excuse me. Advice is given that the continuing disclosure agreement in substantially the form authorized to be executed is on file with the city clerk and is available for inspection by any interested person. Section eight. That the rates for the system water services enacted pursuant to Ordinance Number 5123, adopted and approved on April 1, 2008, and the rates for the sewer system services enacted pursuant to Ordinance Number 5129, adopted and approved on April 15, 2008, and Ordinance Number 5438, adopted and approved on September 20, 2011, are hereby ratified and confirmed. Section nine. The mayor and city clerk, for and on behalf of the city, are hereby authorized and directed to do any and all things necessary to effect the issuance, sale, execution, and delivery of the series 2014 bonds, and to effect the execution and delivery of the fourth supplemental indenture, the bond purchase agreement, the official statement, the escrow agreement, the continuing disclosure agreement, and a tax regulatory agreement relating to the tax exemption of interest on the series 2014 bonds, and to perform all of the obligations of the city under and pursuant thereto. The mayor and the city clerk are further authorized and directed for and on behalf of the city to execute all papers, documents, certificates, and other instruments that may be required for the carrying out of such authority or to evidence the exercise thereof. Section 10. Cootock Rock LLC of Little Rock, Arkansas, is hereby appointed to act as bond council on behalf of the city in connection with the issuance and sale of series 2014 bonds. Section 11. That provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section, phase, or provision shall for any reason be declared illegal or invalid, such declarations shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the section's phrases or provisions of this ordinance. And Section 12. All ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
I hope that's perfectly clear. What we have here is...
If not, I can read it again, Paul.
You read beautifully, Ken. But I think we'll pass. This is an opportunity for, as Alderman Kenyon pointed out, for us to save interest costs of approximately $250,000 by refinancing $7.5 million bond issued 2009. So it's a good opportunity for us, and just like refinancing your house, so we save in interest costs, and those are real costs. I do have Dennis Hunt from Stevenson, Inc., and Gordon Wilburn from Cootock Rock, who are the heavyweights who can answer any questions in case I can't. So if you have any questions, I'll be here to answer.
I'm an employee of Bank of Arkansas Mortgage, which is a division of Bank of Oklahoma Financial, so I'm going to recuse myself from discussion or further activity associated with this, so I'm going to excuse myself. I didn't want people to think I was rude, but that would be the reason I wouldn't do the directory lecture.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mark. Okay. What questions do we have?
I would just like to say that we discussed this at the Water Sewer Committee and approved it.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this? Now I'll bring it back to the council.
Will we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
We have motion in a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the room?
Adams.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $7.5 million of water and sewer system refunding revenue bonds series 2014 by the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding water and sewer system revenue bond series 2009, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fourth supplemental trust indenture pursuant to which the series 2014 bonds will be issued and secured, authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement pursuant to which the series 2014 bonds will be offered, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement providing for the sale of the series 2014 bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of an escrow deposit agreement providing for the redemption of the series 2009 bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of continuing disclosure agreement and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
Okay.
Maybe we should suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second?
We have motion in a second. Sandra, would you please call the room?
Adams.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $7.5 million of water and sewer system refunding revenue bonds series 2014 by the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding water and sewer system revenue bond series 2009, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fourth supplemental trust indenture pursuant to which the series 2014 bonds will be issued and secured, authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement pursuant to which the series 2014 bonds will be offered, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement providing for the sale of the series 2014 bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of an escrow deposit agreement providing for the redemption of the series 2009 bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a continuing disclosure agreement and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
Okay. Any final comments from the council on this?
Only thing I'd like to say, it's always been a pleasure to work with Dennis Hunt and Gordon Wilburn, as well as our staff with this. Before you get to hear this, which I'm sure everybody enjoyed, it went through many, many drafting and revisions and clarifications, and I kept trying to talk Gordon and lent me make it shorter, but he said, well, I had to read this much. He, I had to read out all, everything I read was required to be read to make sure these bonds are going to be legitimate and valid, and so that's why it took that long. But I want to say, I've always enjoyed working with them. They've done a very good job. They've provided us good advice, and I'm happy that they're on our team.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much. Any final, any other final comments from the council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the room?
Adams.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Okay. Number five. McGudlin Williamson Yates Incorporated Amendment Number One. Resolution to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement with McGudlin Williamson Yates Incorporated for Design Services Associated with Recycling and Trash Collection Division Office Building Expansion and Site Improvements. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The item before you is a contract amendment with McGudlin Williamson Yates. It's $406,000 to do the detailed design of some improvements on the site. For, beginning in June of last year, McGudlin Williamson Yates was hired to do a master plan, put together the needs of the site, so they worked with Solid Waste Division, started with wish lists and tried to incorporate all of those elements that the Solid Waste Division provided to them. So I just have a couple of slides I want to go through, talk about what this particular contract will do. It's the detailed design for these particular items. So just beginning with first the existing site, this is the existing office, and of course, the transfer station is here. This is Armstrong down here, so the compost facility with the driveway off of Armstrong, the parking lot. Currently, the, all of the traffic comes in from Happy Hollow through here, transfer station, or transfer trucks, the large semis come in and are loaded here, loop back out. The trash trucks come in and are unloaded here on the transfer station floor. Recycling trucks come in here as well from this location, so we have the scale here. That's where all of the traffic comes through. And so as we discussed this master plan, the traffic in this area was really kind of a big concern. So really, the first thing that, I guess the first priority is the office itself and expanding the office, providing some additional offices for folks who now are in the break room. The crew leaders don't have an office, they're in the break room, kind of around the wall. So that was one of the main focuses as well. So this is what the master plan looks like. This is the portion that we will proceed with detailed design and construction. Rerouting most of the traffic from here to come in off of Armstrong near where the compost facility driveway is, so the traffic will come through here, transfer station trucks, transfer trucks, the semi trucks that pick up the trash, take to the landfill, come in this way, loop around, and then can come back out. New scales here, and again, all of the trash trucks can come in this way, the recycling trucks come in this way as well. So it separates the, much of the commercial traffic that's now coming through here, gives the public a better way to come in, come to the, to the Solid Waste Facility, and also the public can use the transfer station as well. So that's kind of a big component of this. And then, of course, the new office is about 5,000 square feet, new office about 5,200 square feet actually, and so that's really it. That's what we're talking about, the detailed design for these two items. We're looking at two construction packages. One will be to do the site work, get this new driveway in, and then come in and build the building. As you can see, the building, the new, the new office and the new parking lot here take away the current route, so we do need to get this traffic rerouted before this work can begin. So that's it. I'll answer any questions you may have.
What questions do we have, Chris, on this? Okay. Yes, Paul?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention for everybody's understanding, this is the design phase. This will be paid for by some rearrangements of projects that have been completed, and the balance of construction, which will be between about $1.7 million, will come out of reserves. Now remember, we've been accumulating reserves over time in a solid waste fund. So after the construction, after every other capital improvement we have in place now, we will still have approximately $3 million worth of free reserves after that to operate on. So this is, this is generally financed already and has been financed in past rates that were paid. Everybody good with that? I wanted you to know where the funding was coming from.
Thank you.
All right. Well, do we have any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Will we pass the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Well, this was discussed and taken to the Water Sewer Solid Waste Committee. Being rather conservative, of course, I always have a concern when we are taking things out of reserve, but this is the design phase, and the construction phase is going to be equally as necessary because of, we are, it's, listen, if you hear me say it, this is so needed, and we've got to move forward before we get to a point of epic proportions. So it's, it is going to take a bite out of our reserve, but this is why we have the reserve, so we can move forward with projects such as this. And it was approved by the Water Sewer Solid Waste Committee to bring forward.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the room?
Adams.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Okay. What announcements do we have tonight?
Word for cleanup on March 22nd. Don, you were probably going to announce that, but just let everybody know that we're having Al Creek School as well as the Recycling and Trash Collection Facility, which is a change that we appreciate you sharing with all of us, and I think we all agree this is a nice, you may want to go further about that, Don, but thank you. March 22nd, word for 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Mayor, just a couple of announcements. I want to remind citizens whose recycling and trash service that was suspended on Monday and Tuesday due to weather, and also those who are scheduled to have service tomorrow, to put your recycling and trash out tonight. We will begin service, resume service tomorrow. We will be servicing the flatter areas of town initially as we continue to have roads improved, but we're going to do what we've done for the last three snow events, which are hopefully the completion of all services by end of business on Saturday. So we'd like you to set it out there. If your day has already come, those on Thursday can put your trash out on Thursday, and we will get it all handled by Saturday. Also want to remind the council and citizens that the city is currently taking nominations for the 2014 City of Fayetteville Historic Preservation Awards. The deadline is Monday, April 1st. That's not April Fools. That is a true, real deadline at 5:00 p.m. You can visit the city's website, or you can contact Jesse Foulter in the city's Planning Department for information regarding application for those awards. There are two awards that the city gives. The first is Best Preservation Practices Award, and the second is the Mayor's Award for Outstanding Services in Historic Preservation. Individuals are allowed to self-nominate, so if you've had a great historic project... Individuals are allowed to self-nominate, so if you've had a great historic project that you'd like to apply, we encourage you to do so. We're taking those nominations now.
Okay.
Don, do you have the dates of all the ward cleanups? Because unfortunately, I did not write, write them up, because they are in our-
One second, and I will get them for you.
And the Ward Two cleanup, we have, we're not sure where the locations are yet, we're still working on that. And the reason is, we can't use the school, because schools will be in session on, the public school, the Woodland Public School will be in session on that Saturday, so we're going to have to look at an alternative location.
All right, here, let's see.
Maybe you have a location, and you would like to let us know.
If you have any other announcements, you can go ahead with, I continue to try to pull this up.
I apologize for not writing that down. I was, I was trying to think of alternative locations, and I didn't fit the date on my calendar.
Well?
Well, well, it's on this, it is, we'll get it out.
Maybe next meeting.
Right.
Is everybody good?
I just found the old dates.
Okay. Between now and the next meeting, we will, we will get that. All right. Is there anything else? Well, thank you all very much, and we're adjourned.